.......................................................................................................................................
We're on. Good evening, almost a little good afternoon. It's the 5:30 special Fairfax Town Council Agenda meeting in advance of our 6 o'clock Community Forum. We'll call to order and see that all the council members here. Councilmember Bragman is not with us yet. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Renee and we have a second by Barbara. Garrett, we have one item on the regular agenda that's continued. Do you want to take the reins on this one? Thanks.
Sure. If I like to make a brief, well, we'll see how brief, of a staff report, but in essence, this item was continued from your September 3rd council meeting. So at that September 3rd council meeting, the council, actually, take it back. It's your September 17th. Wait, today is September 17th. No, I'm right. So I'm all thrown off. It was the 3rd. The 3rd's continued today is the 17th. I apologize. Anyway, at the September 3rd meeting, the council conducted a public hearing and considered recommendations from staff on the Planning Commission regarding proposed revisions to a general plan amendment. And after much discussion, the council directed staff to return to the council today on September 17th with, in essence, a clean version of the discussions of the general plan amendment. And the thought pattern was that allowed the council to see and the community to see exactly what are the proposed changes to eliminate any uncertainty related to what action was before you. So if you like, we can do this two ways. One is I could actually walk you through the red line again as to specific changes, or I can more generally talk about the changes. It's really up to the council.
I think generally would probably work. At least, it would work for me.
Okay. Okay. So what we did was one of the key changes within the general plan amendment was a general plan amendment. And what that concerns is Jehovah Witness property on Sir Francis Drake was inadvertently land use, given land use designation of Plan Development District, PDD. So what we're doing in this amendment is we're having it revert back to its original land use designation, which is referred to as UR 710 or Upland Residential 710, which means one unit per seven acres or one unit per 10 acres. The zoning for the property is UR 7, so it means it's one unit per seven acres. And that's the major general plan amendment in terms of the map. Now, with regard to the map, I need to point out, we did find on the map that it referred to limited commercial as light commercial. So in the final version of the map, which we will give you, oh, it's on the dais before you, it actually corrects the word, it used to say light, it changes it to limited. Okay. Now, the other changes now are really regarding many of the housing element tables. And what we did was the main concern that was brought up at the meetings was just the issue of how it calculated density for the zoning designations of UR 7 and UR 10. We've corrected all those change. We corrected those density numbers to make it so for UR 7, it's 1, it's .14 units per acre, and for UR 10, it's .1 units per acre. And we made some other narrative changes in terms of examples, in terms of some of the other changes council wanted at the meeting. One was in terms of the example for the commercial recreation zone, we just referred specifically to the town code, and that's where the reference is too. Some of the other changes that we did, we did correct some narratives in the text. In some cases, one, one number we changed was it said 108 units, we changed it to 124, and that actually represents, the number is our goal actually within the housing element. And that comes from 172 is our regional housing share goal for the last 15 years. Forty-eight units have been built or are allowed by right now, and so that gives you a number of 124. In terms of the other changes, I think one of the other major changes was we clarified the PDD language. And so we made it that when we refer to changes to the PDD, it only applied to specific opportunity sites. And so in general, when we talked about a minimum density of 20 units to the acre, it's only limited to two acres of the church property and to Tennelema. And so those were some specific changes. I think for the most part, that pretty much summarizes what the changes are. There are a red line on a dais before you. You have the corrected general plan map that changes light commercial to limited commercial. And we did the same thing on the proposed zoning map that's exhibited to the general plan, changed limited commercial, I mean, light commercial to limited commercial. And the last thing before staff makes this recommendation is we want to clarify some things based on some emails that we've seen from the public. Oh, and the one thing I forgot is I think councilmember Kohler had suggested on one of the narrative changes where we specifically indicate that design review and development standards will still be reviewed. She's indicating that perhaps a better word would be required. And so that'd be up to the council if you'd like to incorporate that. And I think on one of the tables, if you look carefully, on the red line version, it has the words, it has a send function 2, I think. It has it listed twice, but in the clean version, when you receive it, the actual clean version, it won't have it. It's just a printing error. For some reasons, there's some pagnation change and it showed up twice, but in the final version, it won't be there. But in terms of clarification to some of the emails we received from the public, I think we'd like to make clear on the council's action tonight. So the council's action tonight is actually to adopt a general plan amendment. With the repeal of ordinance 778, that only affected the zoning. So whereby zoning went back to what it was before, it did not change the general plan and it did not change the housing element. Those changes for the general plan map can only be done as a general plan amendment. Council, in its wisdom, also determined that all the other changes to tables and narratives should be incorporated into this amendment so that there's no confusion over to what the different densities or designations are related to properties. So again, I just really need to point out that general plan amendment is needed to make those changes to address those concerns raised by the community. The repeal of ordinance 778, the referendum petition itself does not impact the general plan or the housing element. You need to do a general plan amendment, and really to do that, the other items just affect the zoning. So this action really is the council fulfilling its promise to address all those different issues and concerns related to those numerous public hearings and public meetings you had related to issues raised by ordinance 778. And so I thought it'd be very important to make that clear to the community and what you're actually doing tonight. But with that, the staff recommendation is actually that you adopt a resolution adopting amendment to the general plan, which one, formally corrects topographical errors in tables and maps, two, makes minor narrative revisions, correct numerical inconsistencies, and provide additional clarity regarding the PDD zoning for opportunity sites, and three, corrects the listing of the general plan designation for the property we refer to as Jehovah Witness property. And that changes it back to its original land use designation, back to UR 710 from PDD. And so with that, that concludes the staff report. Jim Moore, our Planning Building Services Director, is here to answer any questions as well as I am. Other than that, any questions?
They work? Okay. On the map, on the zoning map, I thought we agreed that we were going to insert the narrative on the zoning map. Right now, the Lutheran Church site is zoned entirely PDD. And I thought during our discussions, we agreed that we would add the little box that appears on the opportunity site master list, so as not to overzone that property again or make it ambiguous. So I see that it was done on the opportunity site master list zone, but it wasn't done on the zoning map, and I think it ought to be called out on the zoning map.
You could do that. It's unusual, the zoning map lives in the zoning ordinance, and what you're referring to is a policy contained in the housing element part of the general plan. And the zoning map, once the project defines through a tentative parcel map application where the two acres are, our intent was to go back and modify through that amendment process with the project hand in hand, just where the two acres in that larger church site is as a, as a formal process goes forward. So it's, it's actually in the housing element, if you go to the next plate, which we didn't provide you last time nor this time, the plate for that first opportunity site, there's language on the graphic there that says area within which the two acres will be carved out. So the policy is, is, lives in the housing element, both in the narrative and in the site plate for that opportunity site. I suppose you could do that with the formal zoning map. It might be good to just touch base with legal counsel about opening up Pandora's Box with putting caveats on a zoning map, which is a standalone sort of point of order document relative to the zoning ordinance language, not necessarily the general plan language or the housing element language, which is the overriding document that then that becomes in conformance with, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern. I, I thought that was what we agreed on, on September 3rd. And I, I know that was one of the major objections to, to, to our ordinance was this, you know, overzoning or whatever you want to call it, miszoning of the entire property. So I think it should be called out. I, I, you know, I just think that's one of the things that needed to be corrected, and it should be corrected.
Oh, that, okay. So I think what the issue is, what Mr. Moore was referring to, is that in the general plan, the zoning map is a figure, but it's not the real zoning map. It's the proposed zoning map showing all the designations if you implement the policies. And so that's why we didn't add that note, because it was more important, opportunity sites. This map was just for illustrative purposes. It's not the real zoning map. Because the real zoning map right now would show that property as UR 7. They can't, they'd have to go by UR 7. They couldn't go by what's in this, this proposed ultimate map, which will change with the future general plan amendment with the church property, because we will then have the balance of the site go back to UR 7, and the two acres would be PDD, and we would know where the actual lines are, and so that's what we said we would, would do.
If, if it is not a legal map and it's an illustrative map, then it should have the note in it, in my opinion. So that's, that's my position on it. And I mean, if it's an illustrative map, then it should fully illustrate the policy, because this, right or wrong, was an issue among the housing element opponents, and I think it needs to be corrected.
Testing. Okay. I, I think we could do that then, if, if, yeah. Yeah. And I, I'm sorry if I dropped the ball. I thought we had come back explaining how that subsequent plate articulated the area within the two acres, but fair enough.
I, I, I don't think we need to even carve it out. It should just be a note.
Can you clarify what the note's going to say so we can do this tonight versus bringing it back again?
The note on the opportunity site master list. That's the note you guys cut and pasted from the text of the housing element.
If you're comfortable with us coming up with that language, I think we're very clear on what the intent of what you're saying now is.
So Larry, when you say it's on this map, then could you read?
Yeah, I mean.
Exactly what you're talking to, talking about?
Let me just make sure. Okay, this is on the opportunity site master list. It says rezoned a maximum of two acres of Lutheran Church property at 2626 from Upland to Plan District Develop, Plan Development District, thereby making it possible to accommodate 40 units of senior housing.
I completely agree.
Okay.
We'll, we'll put asterisk on it and then have that note.
All right. Since we don't want to have our guests waiting, let, let's try to move expeditiously through these. Larry, do you have other thoughts on this? Since you kicked this off?
That, that was my thought.
Renee, do you got anything you want to talk about?
Nope.
Renee, anything else?
Me, Barbara. Thank you. Okay, so just quickly, I know my name is interchangeable, but just want to point out to the rest of the council the changes I wanted, which are not huge, but on page 102 of the clean version, if you look at the paragraph that starts out, "All rezoned sites will permit," et cetera, and then in parentheses, it says, "E.g., design review and development standards will still be reviewed." I would say let's change that to required, to be clear. It's required. I'm not really clear what the word reviewed means.
Sounds like a good idea. Other thoughts?
And the only other thing is just this typo that does appear on the clean version. So it's only a typo, but I'm not sure why we have function 2 on the clean version twice.
And what it was is, it was a printing, it was a printing error, because in the actual document, when we do the final document, the housing element, it's not in there. So what happened is we printed it once, and I guess we printed it again, and for whatever reasons, the pagnation just changed and pushed it. But in the final version, it won't be there.
Okay, so that's all I have.
John?
Yes. I mean, I guess my, my attention is called to, I mean, we have a lot of Plan District Development stuff, and a lot of the conversation has been about carving out the two acres over at the Lutheran Church site. However, School Street is also, School Street Plaza is also anticipated as being PDD in this, and most of the conversation has been about Tennelema and the other one. And on the map, it does say rezoned School Street Plaza from limited commercial to Plan Development District, thereby making it possible to accommodate at least nine units of housing. And then if you look at, at, on page H102, in the same paragraph that Barbara just referenced, where changing reviewed to required, right after that, it says there's at least 16 units per site at a density, a minimum of 20 units per acre. So are we then saying School Street Plaza is going to be 20 units per acre minimum with this language here?
Garrett?
So we're going to be getting into that in the second portion of tonight.
Yeah, but if we approve this now, then we've already done it.
This is making amendments to the language, and we can make those amendments again if you decide to rezone it to a combination of CC and Penn Development District.
Because it's currently limited commercial and it, yeah.
Right, right. And we, hang on a second. Again, we've beefed up the narrative so that the stipulation of the base densities and the 16-unit minimum project on 100% housing site applies only to Tennelema and the church, not to School Street Plaza. And that was always a conundrum in our mind, because at first, we didn't include in the first iteration of the housing element that was adopted in April of '12, we didn't even have any units as part of our arena on that site. And then to find a place for the other arena cycle that we had to place somewhere, we put nine in there, knowing that there was a conundrum, that we're, we're recommending less than what we, on the base density language on the other two sites would be recommending. Sort of speaks to the, how we were intending to deal with the unintended consequences that could be perceived on the other Plan Development District sites. We will be coming back in, depending on the conversation tonight and subsequent meetings to discuss the outcome of tonight, with recommendations as to how to deal with the School Street Plaza site. But it was not our intention to apply the base density and the other kickers in the base density, which is the 16 units and 100% housing parcel to this site. So you, you bring up a good articulation, and that's our next step, is to address that with the outcomes of tonight and further discussions at the council level.
Yeah, because I, I just think that it's important when we're looking at this, that we're, and I, and I realize that, that, you know, the inclusion of School Street came as a result of the back and forth with the state in terms of trying to get the housing element that they would sign off on, except it's a lot bigger than, you know, something that we would need to make our arena numbers work. So I just didn't want to have.
Right.
A situation where we have a major piece of property right in the middle of town and, basically enabling something that we don't necessarily want.
Part of the intent of the latter, part of being here tonight, is to zero in on that site and see what makes sense with the zoning disposition of that site, vis a vis zoning. But again, it's not on that arena chart when we had the first forum. We never, never entered into an agreement with HCD as to that being even PDD. We just stipulated nine units on that site in some form or fashion as part of our arena quota. And if, by the way, we couldn't do it there, then we, there's other language here that says we'll find some other site. And that's what this particular section of the housing element is talking about, is the land monitoring relative to the PDD.
Keep your finger on the pulse of it or whatever. I realize that. I just didn't want to be setting.
Sure.
A, a structure up, you know, for something that we have not.
Right, right. Again, again, we.
You know, painting ourselves into a corner.
Right. The other part of the document clearly indicates that School Street Plaza is not targeted in our agreement with HCD for the base density, which, that is a piece of the base density.
But it is for the nine units.
Not, I'm sorry?
But it is for the nine units.
That is what, we added nine units as part of zoning to allow the potential for nine units, given that still has to deal with design review and parking requirements. But in terms of the absolute number at this point in time, in the housing element, it calls for allowing after design review and parking stipulations for nine units on the site. But you have not codified the actual zoning map yet, nor the zoning ordinance, so that, we're taking it now step by step, sort of a fresh start, step by step, and then we'll be bringing in the map with the language in the zoning ordinance as it goes through. So we'll have it, even a more thorough washing as we go through the process.
John, any other thoughts on this? Again, I hate to keep our guests waiting at the 6 o'clock hour.
Yeah, I, I recognize that, but it's worth making sure that this is right.
Other thoughts?
Not on this right now, but Larry's raising it again.
Just in regard to following up on John's thought, I think we could clarify what our intent is. If you go back to page 101, on the, at the beginning of the land monitoring paragraph, if we just add the sound, the sound, the word on line four, "The town has identified opportunity sites" instead of just sites, I think that would remove. Sorry about that.
Do you know where you are?
Yes. On 101.
Has identified, I think, specified opportunity sites for that, do you?
Sure.
And would you like opportunity sites capitalized?
Oh, yes.
Sure.
So I think if you had specified opportunity sites on that.
Sure. Better yet.
Yeah, because then we go on to talk about specifically Tennelema and.
Right.
Good.
Church. Okay.
Other thoughts from the council on this before we go to the public? No? Would the public like to comment upon this this evening before we get into the 6 o'clock?
This is not the main event.
Not the main event, just, just this adoption today. No? Okay. Well, with that, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back, and we will, I'll take a motion on this.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting an amendment to the general plan to, one, formally correct typographical errors on the tables and maps, make minor narrative revisions to correct numerical inconsistencies, and provide clarity regarding the PDD zoning for opportunity sites, and three, correct the listing of the general plan designation for Assessor's Parcel 174-070-50, commonly known as 2600 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, site of the Jehovah's Witness Kingdom Hall from Plan Development District to Upland Residential 7-10, UR 7. And with the changes we discussed tonight, which is the notation on the zoning map LU2, which would match the same sort of note that we have on the opportunity site map, the change to page 102, changing the word reviewed to required, and on page 101, program H-4.1.1.7, on the fourth line, saying the town has identified specified opportunity sites in caps. With those three changes, I would like to make the motion.
Just, I would second with one friendly amendment, that we add the notation on figure LU12, which is the general plan map, not just LU2.
So it would be on both maps?
On both maps.
Okay, with, are you seconding?
I did.
Okay, with that, we have a motion by Kohler, seconded by Bragman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Any opposed? Seems none. With that, we will close the special Fairfax meeting.
I did, I asked her, I did have a comment before this vote was, I asked her a comment.
After the public comment, it closed, but please, go right ahead. Very, very quickly, please.
This was just on this. I would suggest that on the School Streets, if the nine units, possibly 22 units, that you have a maximum of 22, the general plan is here as far as I'm aware of.
Maximum of 20 units, so that you can extend it. I'd just like to comment on that.
Okay. You know, perhaps we could bring it up again during our forum, which we're going to start in just a few minutes.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll adjourn the special meeting, take a few minutes, take a few minutes, and then go into our special joint meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to the second forum that we've had. A few of you may remember, a couple of months ago, we joined together on a Saturday afternoon for our first forum, and this is the second of a continuing series on the general plan, the housing element. What we're going to do is call the meeting to order, but you may notice from the agenda that this is not just the Town Council meeting, but a joint meeting of all the brilliance in town. It's the special joint meeting of the council, the Fairfax Planning Commission, and the General Plan Implementation Committee, and the Affordable Housing Committee. So the first order of business is to make sure that we have a quorum of all of those groups. So I know that the Town Council is here in full. I want to make sure that we have a quorum of the Planning Commission. Can those of you on the commission raise your hands? Make sure we have four of you? Not yet. Not yet. The G-PIC, what do we got? One, two, three, four? And of the Affordable Housing Committee? Of course. So we're all set on that one. We're a little short, I guess, on the Planning Commission at the moment, but I'm sure they will be here shortly. With that, the way we're going to work it, if you recall, last time, we had a moderator that we brought in, but this time, we've decided to up our game and actually use our in-house moderator, Garrett Toye, our town manager, who has the ability to sort of lead us through that, and Jim Moore, our planning director, who will be the brains of the operation, and taking us through, and Larry Kennings, I'm so sorry, to, to make sure that all of your questions are sufficiently answered. And with that, let me turn it over to Garrett, and let's get the two hours underway.
So first order of business is, we actually got, last time you recall, we had one mic and we had one mic on amplifier. This time, we got both mics to work, but apparently, when we stream it online, it creates a lot of feedback. So again, we have one mic, and it's important, since we're recording it, that you use the mic. But since this is a smaller group, we might be able to just pass the mic around. Oh, sure, sorry. So what we may do, just depends on the comments. Right now, we're slated to just have you come up to the mic and talk. If there aren't a lot, maybe we could pass the mic around. If there aren't a lot, maybe we could pass the mic around. We just thought we just have a little more flexibility that way. So, again, so what we have is, the mayor kind of did his introductions. He actually already did the welcomes. And so what I'd like to go over maybe is some quick ground rules. And really, the only ground rule, we have this whole list, but the only ground rule is, we just ask that you just be respectful of other people's opinions and comments. Let people finish. We do plan to allow about two minutes per speaker. We do, hopefully, we'll get everyone a chance to speak. How we're doing this tonight is we're breaking it into two sections, one on Tenolima, one in School Street Plaza. Got roughly 45 minutes or so, 45, 50 minutes for each topic. Hopefully, we get through it. That's kind of our game plan. Now, just as a little background, the reason we're having this forum is because the council, back in July 16th, actually approved a series of actions, next steps, to go through on a fresh start of the process after we repealed ordinance 778. And so just earlier, they adopted the general plan amendment. That was one step. The second step was to have workshop, well, forums on Tenolima and School Street Plaza. That's tonight. Another step will be a future forum regarding the rezone of properties from Highway Commercial to Central Commercial. That's sometime next year. And one of the other actions, which is a separate action, will be the actual church property. They'll actually go through the process of a general plan amendment and rezone and design review of their project. That will be a separate process. So with that, I think I covered most of the issues. I think the last thing is, oh, what we're not doing tonight, sorry, most importantly, what we're not doing tonight is the council is not approving any plans. The council is not approving any zoning. Neither is the Planning Commission or any of the other bodies. Tonight's purpose of the forum really is just to start the discussion. Let's hear the concepts from the actual property owners. Let's talk about the policies. Let's talk about the issues raised and how we could possibly address that in the future. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Jim. We have one mic. My role as moderator, oh, Larry, turn it over to Larry. My role as moderator is, I may have to tell you to hurry up if you're around a two-minute time, and then I'll be pushing the buttons. Oh, you already have a comment, and we're not even there yet.
I know. I just had a comment before we get started. With the two separate elements, Tenolima Road and School Street, could we get separate two minutes each for those? Oh, great, thank you.
That's the game plan. Right. Right. If we could stay on schedule, at the end, we'll also have a general question answered. But the goal is to allow everyone to comment, and so we'll have to be pretty efficient. So with that, I'll turn it over to Larry.
I'll see if I can do mine in two minutes. I want to review some of the things we went over at the last forum. I gave you kind of a rundown of the general plan law and what's required by the state, so I'll go through that again. The state planning law requires that all the cities and counties in the state, and that includes the towns, have to have a general plan. And the law also says those general plans have to have seven, what we call mandatory elements. And those are land use, circulation, open space, conservation, noise, safety, and the housing element. The state allows us to do an optional, as many optional elements as we want, and we did one. We're calling it the Town Center Element. So the Fairfax general plan has eight elements. The housing element is a kind of a unique character. It's the only one that requires certification by the state. The other, the other elements, including the optional ones, don't go the same, don't go through the same rigor that the housing element does. Most general plans, the state recommends that we, we project general plans out for between 10 and 20 years, with the exception, again, of the housing element, which has to be reviewed every seven years. And it's on a seven-year cycle, and our next cycle starts next year, 2015. The way it works, the State Department of Finance, when we have our cycle, the State Department of Finance does projections based on population growth. And when they do those projections, they then identify the amount of housing that would be required by different categories, moderate income, low income, very low income. The housing, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which Jim will refer to, and we always refer to as HCD, rather than its long name, they confer with the local council of governments in all the different jurisdictions in the state of California. And ours is the, it's called ABAG, and I'm sure you've seen that written or heard it recently. So ABAG takes the projections that are given to them by the state, and then allocates the different, the number of units for each one of those different categories. Now, our allocation is called the regional housing, regional housing needs allocation. And Jim is going to refer to that as RENA. So those are two acronyms you'll hear a little bit, a lot of, or three of them. ABAG, RENA, and HCD. You'll hear that tonight. HCD also requires us to identify opportunity sites within the town limits, and we've done that. We're going to talk about two of those sites tonight, as Garrett's already mentioned, Tenolima Road and the School Street Plaza. So those are going to be the two projects we're going to be focusing on this evening. Mr. Moore?
Okay, can you hear me okay? It's kind of a fuzzy sound to this mic tonight, I'm sorry. I'll try to talk over it a little bit, if that helps. Okay, what Larry said was just really important, and I just want to reiterate before we start, that the state requires that the housing element be certified, and it gives to the regional authorities a quota, a number of homes. And that's been a big controversy in the discussion over the repeal of zoning ordinance 778. So we're here tonight to talk about how we're attempting to meet that quota, not whether we should meet that quota. That's a different discussion. In fact, that argument is with the state and with the policymakers that decide at the local level whether to accommodate, which is required by law under the Constitution, to follow the state's Constitution. So if you're here saying we shouldn't do any of this, that's, that's a valid argument. It's just not what we're here to discuss tonight. We're talking about what the state has given us in terms of our fair share of housing to meet. And if you recall from the first forum, our last, our current housing element accommodates the last two RENA rounds, and I'm sorry about the small print here on this slide, but it's also in the back of the room on the wall. It's from 99 to 2006. We had 64 units, and from 2007 to 2014, we had 108, total of 172. And the way we met that RENA was in this table right here, with 40 units of senior at the Christ Church Site, 22 units of workforce at Tenolima, at least nine units at School Street Plaza, the West Side Commercial of what was to become Central Commercial, 17 units, the Fair and Selma area, 22, and East Side Commercial, the enclave to the east of Pastore, 14 units. And then, as Larry mentioned, or, excuse me, as Garrett mentioned, we captured credit for those sites that had either been already zoned to accommodate housing, or actually were entitled, gained permits to build homes between 1999 and today. So it's really important to get this. The town is required by law to zone for the possibility of these units coming in. If someone comes in, an owner, or a builder, or a nonprofit builder comes in, they still have to go through design review, and they still have to meet our requirements for parking, which actually may change, depending on what the town wants to do in certain sites. We don't do the project, it comes into us. We have nothing in yet on the two sites we're going to focus on tonight. We do not have any applications in for Tenolima, and we do not have any applications in tonight, today, yet, for School Street Plaza. Both owners are here in the room tonight. Mr. Joe Weinsider owns Tenolima. Joe's in the back of the room, and he is a passive participant tonight, because he doesn't have a project yet. He very graciously came forward with his site as a potential that we started to explore, and I'm going to show you in a minute a couple of slides on what the town did in exploring the potential of that site. He's graciously put that site up as an opportunity site. It remains to be seen whether Joe will do a project, whether he'll sell the project, I'm sorry, sell the site to do a project, or whether he'll partner with someone to do the project. I might add that Joe has been an angel, if you believe in this work, because he's offered up at least half of the units, should this come to fruition through the application project, process, to affordable, more affordable units. Now, how that happens, who knows at this point? And as you may have recalled from the last conversation about the church, the more funds you receive from different public entities, the more restrictions can be placed on who's keeping. I'm going to get the sites to a half an hour. We started about four minutes ago. I'm going to try and open it up to converse, to questions for five or 10 minutes, depending on how well we keep to that half hour. And then after each site, where there's questions after each site, I'm hoping to keep about 10 minutes at the end for more global questions or questions you hadn't thought of that may have come to mind during the discussion. Okay, so back to where we are. So next slide, please. So early on, so here's the master list. It was up on the, on the wall last time. We went through it. Here is the town's, that table you just saw, 40 units of senior on eventually two acres of the 20-acre Christ Lutheran Church Site. Tenolima, 22 units of workforce housing. School Street Plaza, at least nine units, and it had always been on our mind that because we were not married to the site being zoned for Plan Development District, there may be a more appropriate zoning, or a more appropriate zoning mix, but we'll get into in a moment on that. And then lastly, the infill strategy in the new part of the Central Commercial zoning. This is currently zoned Highway Commercial, and the housing element calls for these bookends of town, which are Highway Commercial and about cars, monolithic buildings with parking lagoons, post-World War II phenomenon, away from human-scale development to all about the car, back to the Central Commercial zoning, which is more about pedestrians, about parking once and doing many things. It's about accommodating multimodal planning, zoning those bookends of town away from Highway Commercial to Central Commercial, and as things build out, have it mimic the historic scale of the town, nothing over two floors, which was a big kicker as we went through this whole process. But again, tonight, we're going to look at just Tenolima, School Street Plaza, but I just want to iterate one other thing, that in the housing element that was passed in 2012 with the general plan, as well as the amended housing element passed last November, the game plan, regardless of all the ifs, ands, and buts on the tables, the math errors, the mapping error, the language, the errata or general plan amendments that just occurred, regardless of that, the game plan for the town in the original 108, or with 128 now, has always been the same. It's the 40 units of senior at the church, 22 units of workforce housing at Tenolima, and then infill in the heart of town to try to create a more transit-friendly, a critical mass around the transit in the center of town. Okay, so let's move on. So on Tenolima, this is the site, it's in the housing element. That master, master slide you just saw shows all the master sites, and then subsequently in the housing element, each site is laid out. And so this is Tenolima. It's what we call in the design world, an old flat iron, like an old iron site. It actually has the most historic house that I know of in town. It was occupied by the granddaughter of the Spanish soldier who received the land grant for this area of Marin County from the King of Spain, and she lived there at one time. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, I think most recently, it was two units, one unit up and one unit down, and at one point in its life, it was actually a unit up and a restaurant down. And then next to that, next to the creek here, which is this blue line running through, is the old Mandarin Gardens Restaurant. And Joe actually has his beautiful pottery studio in that right now. And so we toyed with the idea of whether to use that structure or not, but the old house must stay. It's a historic structure. In fact, you'd have to do a full-blown EIR, about 150,000 bucks, if you're going to try and get rid of that thing. That's staying. So we wanted to hear from you tonight about the restaurant, whether you think that is a good idea to keep and use, or whether we should tear that down. So when this came to us, thanks to Larry before I got here, finding out, I'm not sure whether Joe contacted you, or you contacted him, or how it went, but we started some discussions. And this is in the early drafting of sort of closing in on a housing element strategy about five years ago. So we brought up at the, as a guest of the Affordable Housing Committee, and at that time, Lou Tremaine was mayor, and Mr. Bragman was vice mayor, and we had some learned professionals on the committee, not the least of which was, is still on there, Tony Gardner, who's an attorney, has, full disclosure, the husband of our clerk. And it escapes me right now who else was on there, but we sponsored these site capacity studies. We pulled up an architect from Santa Cruz that I had worked with, and Santa Cruz Redevelopment Agency after the earthquake down there, who's a very learned professional, and he does things on a dime, and really quick, and they have a reality to them. So we brought Matthew Thompson up here for two days, one day to work on the church site and show us what he thinks could happen in the already-built area, and then the second day, we focused on School Street Plaza. And in that one day, we met in the morning, we talked about our ideas, we went away, and we came back, and magically, there were three drawings. And here's the drawings, okay? This is Site Plan A, and these are just conceptual. It's so easy. Plans have power. As soon as you put a plan up on the wall, people say, "I'll never, you shouldn't do that." It's like, no, this is just conceptual. It's not done. This is not an absolute number of parking spaces or anything. This was just to test what we think could comfortably fit on this 1.24 acre site with a setback from the creek within the scale of the community. What you're looking at here never goes over two floors and explores what we call in architecture, different typologies, building footprints, if you will, and the number of units in each building, if you will. So this first one, this is the, just to orient you, here's Sir Francis Drake. Here's Sir Francis Drake. Here's Alima Road, okay? And here's the creek, all right? There's the old Mandarin Restaurant, and there's the old Dyer's House. And if you recall, if you've gone by that site, there's this wonderful old gate here that was the gateway for the restaurant. So that actually lives in all three iterations. And then this corner, in these skinny, flat-iron tip-of-the-spear pieces, always becomes interesting. And of course, in keeping with historic scale of downtown, you have zero build, zero setback buildings. That means where the building right, comes right out to the street in the old historic part of town. That's another piece of pedestrian planning. So you'll see different iterations as we go through. This is the first one. It's got, I think I counted earlier, maybe 12 parking sites on, 12, 14 sites, parking spaces onsite, and then it's got, I believe, six on a slightly recessed area along the curb on this, on the street. And then it also allows, this says Class 2 bikeway, was planning for a bikeway along Alima, and it may have actually gone in, I'm not sure. So you see here, actually, before we knew we had to agree to 100% housing site with the Department of Housing and Community Development, we looked at a little hybrid of a downstairs café with studios above. These are fourplexes of two down and two up, sort of like the old Berkeley-Oakland model. And then this is sort of a hybrid of that with a little different corner building here with the one up, one down here, one up, one down, one up, one down. And this, these, you could actually carve 20 to 22 out of these mixes. We saw live workspace in the restaurant for perhaps artists, and the overall intent in the beginning was to find modest-sized homes that are, residences that are by definition more affordable because they're smaller. So let's move on to the second slide. You'll, you might, back up for just a second, if you will. In all three scenarios, you'll find that the parking program is back against the busy street to sort of, you know, and also to put the parking out of view, so that the view from the street is of the buildings and of people and activity, and not just the parking lot. And then it, okay, this is version two, and here you see the old restaurant gone, the old house there, and now you see a slightly smaller product here, slightly smaller product. And over here, you see a slightly different, six-plex, and over here, an eight-plex. And this also was modeled with retail or café below with a little plaza on the corner to capture all the bikes going by. But that will go by the wayside now that we've cut this deal with RCD, sorry, HCD, that it's 100% housing, unless you actually bifurcated this lot and kept 0.24 acres on the corner, and then did the housing on the 0.1 acre. and then did the housing on the 0.1 acre. That's another story. This, this is one of my favorite ones without, with actually keeping the restaurant. I particularly like this because this product right here, we were looking at what's called the Katrina Cottage. After Katrina Hurricane, some really brilliant urban designers and architects came up with an immediate way to get housing on the ground in, in New Orleans. And it was going back to the old shotgun cottages before World War II, real small. And if you Google Katrina cottages, you will find over 100 makers and designs of them. And, and many of them actually start super small, like 150, 200, 300 square feet, and then actually expand. Lowe's actually sells kits of Katrina cottages. So, this, this one is very interesting, particularly this one to me, because if you notice, this is kind of like the old courtyard housing, remember the old courtyard housing where the, the cars would actually drive in a little driveway and then park in the back? This is that sort of courtyards theme without the driveway. And what I particularly loved in our conversation in this little mini charrette and site capacity study exercise was, we evolved to sort of Katrina cottages, to maybe even some self-help housing where people participate, believe it or not. One of our members of the Affordable Housing Committee, Scott Hochtruster, who couldn't be here tonight because of an emergency with his wife, he participated in a self-built project up the canyon that he lives into this day. That was a successful project. So, last slide, version three. This keeps the restaurant, keeps the house, and then instead of all the cottages on both sites, it kicked back from here. It was leaving a little bit more open space next to the creek and a four-plex here, four studios above retail, and this was just sort of a step out. You can mix and match these, and these are not set in stone. Again, this was just to get a comfort level. There, again, please hear me, there is no application in yet. When somebody, either Joe, or if he sells the site to a developer, or, or gets in partnership with a developer nonprofit, they will have to go through a whole design process to make hard drawings. They'll have to come in with an application to the Planning Commission, and we won't be able to back off the absolute number of units, but the town has, say, over the design guidelines and the character of the units, how tall they are, the massing, and the number of parking spaces. And let me just say one thing about the number of parking spaces, not to get Lou in trouble, but during the exercise, and tell me if I'm wrong, I remember Lou saying, "We should try to minimize as few parking spaces onsite as possible." And then those of us that are usually at the front line are going, "Oh, my God, if you do that, you know, the, the neighbors are going to come in and say, well, all the parking that should have been on the site's going to go in the neighborhood." So that's something to think about tonight, is, is that issue. And in terms of things to think about, we listened to you, the public, when you were making comments over the kerfuffle on ordinance 778, and here's our takeaway on this site. Traffic. Well, I'll get back to that in a second. Adequate parking, affordability, scale of the project, and use of the historic structures. So we'd like to hear from you in a few minutes, what you think about the parking, affordability, scale of the project, use of historic structures, and the trip generation. And here's sort of preliminary comments that we put together, having thought about your comments. First of all, the entire housing element was required to go through the California Environmental Quality Act. That's abbreviated SEQA. It's California Environmental Quality Act. That was started in the mid 60s, 70s in California, and it's a parallel process to development entitlements and to applications going through the development process. The state of California, in its wisdom, said, "You, the public, and you, the policymakers, should know what the environmental consequences are going to be of a project." So, parallel to what we do in the Planning Commission is this analysis that goes on. And in this is the basis for most lawsuits to stop a project. It can be called inadequate. And of course, there are different levels of environmental review with SEQA. There's a checklist to begin with, and I think I mentioned this in July 12, and that's the initial, an initial study, a checklist. And if you can reduce any consequences to the development or the potential of, of these 22 units to less than significant, then you can just file a, what's called a mitigated negative declaration, that you have to show how you're going to keep the consequences down to less than significant. If you can't show that any consequences of the development are going to be less than significant, then you're required to do a full-blown environmental impact report, the big bad EIR. It's hard to do an EIR in Marin County for less than maybe 100, 150,000 bucks, and they're usually more like on larger projects, 200 and above. So they can put the kibosh on projects right from the get-go. But the general plan and the housing element had a SEQA document, and when the housing element was amended in November of last year, we did an addendum. We went back to our consultants on air quality and traffic. We asked them if the additional units that we folded into that first cut of the housing element that was adopted in 2012 increased any of the impacts, and they said no. So we filed an addendum. It's a public document, as it goes on file, it gets published, and I know it's really hard for the public to keep up with all this minutia. It's really prescribed by law, and it's hard. It's daunting when you're in the business to keep up with the changing aspects of the law. I know it's really hard for the public, and so we try to keep you informed along the way. It's a daunting task sometimes. So, next, discuss the restriction of 50% workforce housing at Tenalima. Again, we're blessed with an owner that currently wants to do the right thing. He knows from experience in real estate that you've got to make it profitable, and I think Joe is planning for his family once he goes to heaven, so he wants to make sure he leaves things intact for them. But graciously, he's offered up 50% affordable. Now what that means, it, who knows? It remains to be seen on where the money comes from, who he partners with, or if he sells it, who that entity is and what they come in with. Okay. The housing element does call for the base density of 20 units per acre to be applied to Tenalima. And just backing up a moment, like I mentioned on July 12, one of the benefits of tagging a site with the base density as far as the Department of Housing and Community Development is concerned, is that in their thinking, if you hit the base density, then we relax the, all the tiered lower-income classifications. Because there is an argument out there in the world, in, in fact, in many of our minds, that you increase supply, then you reduce price. You reduce supply, you increase price. That's what's happening in much of the Bay Area where people can't find housing. San Francisco's a classic case of it. I would argue that's happening now with the rental prices you're seeing in Fairfax. You're changing by not doing anything. People are leaving. People are losing their homes, and there's no alternatives. Okay. Parking restrictions, that's totally game. And in fact, other parts of the general plan, in both the housing element and the land use element, call for the town. We were going to be doing it with the Town Center Plan Process, that, remember Larry said our one optional element was the Town Center Element? And the Town Center Element doesn't say, "Thou shall pedestrianize Balinas, thou shall do these things." It says, "Hold forums," just like we, we did to create this document, and come up with a plan for the town, and it gives license to look at a managed parking program. That means managing the town's resources of parking, the private resources of parking, and try to get a handle on best practices with stopping people cruising around, creating greenhouse gases, looking for a car space, getting back in their car to go from one end of the town to the other, et cetera, et cetera. We have that license in the document. And again, general plan hasn't gone away. Housing element has not gone away. It was adopted. It is the blueprint for the town. The exercise of creating the zoning map as part of the zoning ordinance was, was upturned, undone. The old zoning map is in place, but we are still required by law to bring the zoning map as part of the zoning ordinance. That's the code. It's a section of the town code. It governs the town. We're required by law to bring the zoning ordinance, which includes the map, into compliance with the document, the housing element and the general plan as a whole. That's our, that's our mandate. Now, again, some people argue, "Don't do it. Don't have a housing, don't have a general plan." It's a different discussion and a different battle with different people, thank heavens. I don't want to fight that bottle. Okay, and then also discuss the potential scale of the project and use both the historic site and the former restaurant structure, whether to use the former restaurant structure. So, I'm at about 27 minutes. We've got about seven, well, actually, we have a few more minutes for preliminary questions on this site. Renee?
So, a very important question came from Mr. Vaccaro about the workforce housing designation. So what exactly does that mean? And given the fair housing constraints, what are we talking about with workforce housing?
And here again, depending on what funding sources may or may not be involved in a project, you can have restrictions placed on a project by those funding sources. Workforce housing as a definition is all over the place. Live-work housing, when it first came out, used to be sort of for craftsmen, you know, that have a garage and, or a sort of live-work studio space where they paint and all those things. It's now evolved into high-tech live-work housing, workforce, live-work's housing is what I'm talking about right now. Live-work. Workforce housing is to try to create a affordable place for people that are the bread and butter of your, your stores, your, your restaurants, that work here but can't afford to live here. So it gets down to, how can you make sure that those are the people in the units? And that really comes down to the management of the project, or if you're going to actually do a for-sale project, who you open the units up to for purchase. But the idea is, we have, in fact, we have some friends at Sorella's that work there that come in from Vallejo, and this is the second place they work during the day. They work at the Dipsey Café in Tam Junction in the morning and through the afternoon, and then they come here in the evening, and then they drive back to Vallejo. And my vision for this little project, if, if anyone wants to listen to me that wants to develop this project, is would be, you know, small cottages with a community garden for the residents, with shared childcare. I don't know if any of you have ever heard of the term cohousing? It came out of Scandinavia, where people get together, they have their entire own unit, but then they have a central house which has sort of a common kitchen. And once a month, it's usually about 14 people, 14 couples and kids, with kids in a cohousing project, and so twice a month, you do the cooking, and 28 days a month, you don't do the cooking. And instead of paying 40% of your income for childcare, you share the childcare. And then also, the proximity of this site at the very edge of the central business area is in close proximity, proximity to walking. And in, it's ironic, but about 20 to 25% of the households in the Bay Area, sorry, excuse me, of the households in the Bay Area, about 20 to 25% of household income goes to transportation. So if you can create a living environment for people that work in our shops and our restaurants, where they could share childcare, grow some of their own vegetables, walk to work, you've actually increased their income. They may still be making minimum wage, but they're not spending a quarter of it on childcare. These are the win-win-wins that are out there in the best practices. So, next question, if there are any, we can come back. Yes?
A couple of things, I'll be as quick, quick as possible. I couldn't tell from looking at the plans, and I can't tell from looking at this. It seemed that you were making the parking close to the road. Is that Sir Francis Drake that you're talking about? Well, that's very nice for the people who live there. They have a better view, but it makes the ride through Fairfax going down Sir Francis Drake really ugly. We already have a lot of that already. That's one. Another one is, something that's very near and dear to my heart, is wildlife corridors. I think for any new building anywhere in Fairfax, that's the least we could do to protect the beautiful place where we live, is to see where are wild animals, the deer? How are they going to get through from place to place? It's something to be kept into consideration. And last but not least, when you're saying all this wonderful affordable housing for the people who work in Fairfax, it's my understanding that you can't control. These can be people from Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, anywhere in the world. I don't think by law, we can make it more for Fairfaxans.
Okay. With regards to the parking along Sir Francis Drake, in our world, there's always a trade-off. I mean, the design world is always a trade-off. There's a great separation between the site and Sir Francis Drake. It's quite down. It's actually, I would say, to the, at least to the top of that window where Sir Francis Drake is relative to the ground where the parking would be. So, again, we don't have a plan in yet. You're reacting to a site capacity study, which is a what-if. I personally would love to debate you on where the parking should go, when we actually, not, actually, it won't be my role to debate you where the parking should go. You should come to the Planning Commission meeting when an application comes in and speak your mind about all these things. There's no done deal here, okay? With regards to the wildlife corridor, thanks to Larry, he managed to get a, a grant from Katie Rice, our supervisor, for $10,000. And even though we had done the SEQA study, which included a cursory biological analysis of the site, we actually threw that $10,000 grant and a little extra money out of the town's general plan, general fund. We did the geological study and a biological study, and they're available, and you're welcome to look at them. And then lastly, as I mentioned just a few moments ago, maybe you weren't here yet, that's absolutely right about affordability, is that, first of all, we can't apply an affordability restriction to one site, that's spot zoning. We have to create policies, if you want to do that, that are sweeping in terms of a different, you know, in a certain zone or among a certain group of properties, for example, identified in the housing element, and the Planned Development District would be an example of that. So you're right, depending on which funds are plugged into a project, you can or cannot target certain populations. Having said that, Mr. Weinseidler here owns the site. He brought the project to us, he brought the site to us, and he may or may not be getting those funds that restrict who you rent to. He owns this property. We're not doing the project, we're only zoning it for the possibility of 22 units if they can come in with a project that meets the development standards, including parking for the town. It is a public participatory process through the Planning Commission that can be appealed up to the town council with a $500 payment. So, nothing's a done deal here, except you could not say, as a planning commissioner, if a plan came in and the only thing you didn't like was the number of units, you couldn't say there's too many units. That policy is being dictated by the general plan. Good questions. Thank you.
John Sargent, I live in Fairfax. I reject your initial statement about that doing nothing isn't an option, because it very much is an option. And former councilperson Calderaro checked with ABAG and other agencies and asked if anybody had ever been fined for not making, meeting these requirements, and the answer was, "Nobody's been fined." So I reject that argument. As far as the rezoning, I'm very uncomfortable with Lima Road with two things. What will be affordable housing? Now you say, "Well, it could be determined by this and whatever," but we're not locking it down. In order to have affordable housing, the money has to be there. And we have no guarantee by your own, by your own talk, of any money to support affordable housing. The owner doesn't build housing to lose money. I mean, he may be doing certain things that are really good for Fairfax, but he, he's not in it to lose a lot of money. I'm also very uncomfortable with, with no maximum amount of units being stated. Certain people have said there's potential for 66 units on that property. I don't know if that's true or false. I'd be much more apt to approve some housing on that project if there was absolute maximum limit set on that rather than a minimum of. And I'm sorry to say this, but I don't have any faith in the Planning Commission or Durb. I guess they're merged now, aren't they? With one body? Okay. Judging from their past actions, I'm sorry to say this, I know they're hardworking people and put in a lot of time, I have zero faith in their ability to look after my interests as a Fairfax citizen. Thank you.
John, let me just say, make one thing clear, clarify one thing. When I said, I did not mean to say, forgive me if I did say, that doing nothing was not an option. Doing some, doing nothing's an option. What I meant to say, what I had intended to say was, doing nothing is actually doing something. Change never stops. The only thing that doesn't change is change. And what I'm trying to say is, doing nothing is doing something. You're allowing change to occur in an unintended way. And what's happening right now in town is, people are losing their affordable units and having to leave. So by doing nothing, the character of Fairfax is changing. That's what I was trying to say. And in terms of affordability, again, Mr. Weinseidler is not necessarily starving to death, and he owns this property, and he's been a very successful person. And there are people in the world that want to do the right thing. In fact, there's people that spend their careers trying to do the right thing. I would also argue with you that- I would also argue with you that I believe it's legitimate that there is a supply and demand aspect to housing and the cost of housing. So the argument that you, if you, when you only focus on, well, you can't prove that these are going to be affordable to low ranges, I think that only holds so much water. There's an overriding argument, in my opinion, of supply and demand, and if you just argue that you can't verify this is low income and therefore it's not worth doing, I think you're still shooting yourself in the foot in terms of providing the amount of housing available. Yeah, all right, sorry. Yes, sorry.
Yes, Lou Vaccaro, and I live right across the street from this project, and so I...
There is no project.
Huh?
No, I know.
From this proposed project, okay?
From this rezoning.
Rezoning. Pardon? Okay. And I see a lot of problems with this, and one of the things is, you're talking about 22 units. Talking about, say, 22 units, let's talk about that now. 22 units, you're going to have at least two cars per unit, at least. Each unit, there's going to be two people, and they all have their own cars now. So we're talking about a lot of traffic going in and out of this project. And that really concerns me, because when you come out of the project, it's only a little over 100 feet up to the stop sign. So when morning comes and people go to work, which way are they going to go? You said you had a traffic study, but we didn't talk about it. So I'd like to hear what you have to say about that, because I think the traffic and the number of cars coming out of this project is a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. We actually did a little looking into this based on the comments we heard you say. And while we can't restrict people from driving, one of the ways you can start to mitigate the impacts of driving is handling the parking. Having said that, there's one project we've heard about that I've not verified, I think it's the Whistle Stop in San Rafael. From a lease standpoint, I've heard they're going to require the tenants to not own cars. We can't do that as the government, but the owner, that's happening, that's what they're, that's what we're doing. So I'm just, I'm just sharing with you information of what's going on. And the fact is that we can't stipulate that you can't own a car. So the only way to sort of handle the impacts is through the parking, and that's, it's a big challenge, and parking is one of the most contentious issues around. Next question. Yes?
So, a couple of points. One is to not decide, is to also make a choice. And to go to the supply and demand argument, let's be realistic about this, the fewer places there are to build in Fairfax, the more valuable they become. And at a certain point, instead of people suing to stop development, you're going to run into the problem of people suing to create development. They're going to force your hand. The land will be so valuable that they can afford SEQA, they can afford a few hundred thousand dollars out of pocket for legal fees, they'll win, and they'll build whatever they choose, once they get through the design process. So let's not kid ourselves, we have an opportunity here for some control and some input. There are friends and neighbors here who would object to the building of a birdhouse within the town limits of Fairfax. And once again, I don't know what the largest project that's been built in the town of Fairfax is, if it's Bennett House or what it was, if it's the apartments right here, I don't know that. But what I do know is, and I'm still waiting for someone who opposes this to show me, where did the planning commission go wrong? Where is this vehement feeling that the planning commission can't be trusted? What did they screw up?
Keep it sort of focused on the policy issues at hand. Yes?
Toby Johnson-Smith, Miranda Drive, Fairfax resident. Thanks for the presentation, Jim. So my question is, it seems like with all these sites, we're talking about preapproving a dense, an increase in density or a minimum number of houses, right? So my question is, what, it seems like there's trade-offs in doing that, in terms of, rather than a proposal-by-proposal basis, where you can look at the whole package, look at parking, look at the structure, the nature of the development, say, imbalance, it works, you can have higher number of houses, or no, these other pieces aren't good, we're going to cap it at 15 or whatever you choose. So my question is, what's the advantage of basically preapproving these increases in densities? And I think, you know, this gentleman spoke to a bit of that. And then it's kind of a broader question, which, you know, again, this gentleman spoke to in red, about kind of the basic assumptions we have in town about increased density or increased number of units. And you opened up saying, you know, basically, it's a fundamental sort of truth or fact that we have to get to this 172. And just like this gentleman in red, I would say, is that really the case, or is there some, you know, flexibility or ability to push back or treat that differently? And not saying personally that it's necessarily bad to have that many units, but it seems we as a town should decide as a community, what is the goal of Fairfax in terms of number of houses, the look and feel of it, the density. And there's trade-offs, right? The more houses could be, more traffic, more parking, more pressure on schools, our kids go to the local schools. The upside could be a more vibrant downtown, you know, less empty storefronts, more pedestrian, more vitality, all sorts of great stuff. But I guess my question is, and I've only lived in town for four, five years, but has that discussion happened? Because it may be we actually want more than 172 units, or maybe a lot less, but, you know, has that debate or community discussion had, you know, been happened?
So you asked, you said, what is the advantage of pre-developing through this process? I would phrase it differently. We have a responsibility under the state of California's housing element law to jump through this hoop and pre-plan in a comprehensive way. And I think that the town, over the 15-year process where they came up with this strategy, has thought very carefully, and a lot of those discussions have become stale, that's got us here. But what you're sort of going back to, you may have come in a little bit late. Did you get here a little bit after we started? No, okay. Because I think where you're heading back to is, you know, if you want to debate whether we should do the RENA, whether we should accommodate the regional housing needs allocation, that's another discussion. We're not discussing whether we should do it. We're discussing from the premise tonight that we are trying to do it, and this is the way we've come up with meeting our RENA. So if you don't think that the town has done the right thing with finding the 128 units in these locations, tell us where it should go. But if you're telling us it shouldn't come in, that's another discussion. That's a different discussion.
It seems that's the fundamental question, right? Is, do we need to do the 172? And there are many good reasons why you may want to do it, but is it really about meeting a dictate from ABAG, or are there other reasons as a community we want to do it? And I think there are, I'm just not sure they've been articulated. And I think that's why maybe we're seeing a fragment, you know, a sort of bifurcation in opinion here, because people don't, I think, get the value proposition here. It seems, even me too, it seems like if we're just doing it to meet ABAGs, that's a bit of pillar to swallow. But if, as this gentleman said and others, there may be many other compelling reasons to do this, you know, let's hear about that and discuss that.
You bring up a good point, but again, I won't drop the one about, we are trying to meet the RENA in this discussion. There are good things going on. I think that creating, I think the town's approach for this in terms of just three main approaches, the senior housing, we know there's a silver tsunami coming. We have a real need to address the housing needs of seniors that are coming. I think the, and we've, if you go to the appendix of the housing element, there's all this background analysis that goes in to this work. The planning commission, the general plan, at that time advisory committee, which is now the general plan implementation committee, and the affordable housing committee, all in their public sessions have dealt with a lot of these issues along the way. Now we're sort of playing catch-up, we're taking a pause to try to revisit these issues and how we landed at these solutions. But there are benefits, there's economic benefits. Infrastructure, and we're going to have to cut us off from here and wait till the end for more questions on this site, but infrastructure, there's an economy of scale with infrastructure. Let me just give you a quick example. It costs 300 times more to deliver mail in rural areas as it does in urban areas, because a mailman just goes like this with the boxes. And in the rural area, he gets in his car, goes to a box, goes down another mile, it's a box. Healthcare industries won't serve you in certain rural areas. Pipes, sewer pipes, require a certain critical mass. And it turns out, most importantly, transportation is critical to have certain levels of density that make transit at different levels of service viable. It's right from buses to trolley to light rail to heavy rail. There are critical levels of density, and that's what the state has tried to do through this big bad thing, AB32, of getting our greenhouse gas production down to 1990 levels by 1920. And likewise, SB 375, that implements AB32, which means that we want to connect land use with transportation to give people alternatives to getting out of their car and create the critical mass of wealth to support the transit. It's called value capture. Yes, Bruce, and then Wendy.
Well, I appreciate that question as to what the benefits would be. And I would say for myself, I'm not actually at this meeting because of RENA, I'm at this meeting because I do see benefits to the community. So I would say just very briefly, one benefit is the provision of some modest-sized housing, which would, if we can have any affordability criteria on it, great, but if not, it's still modest-sized housing. That increases demand, or increases supply, and therefore there are just more people who would love to be able to join our community, many of them already in our community. There are kids who've grown up here and can't stay here. We know many people like that, who are just basically being driven out. They either live with their parents for their entire life, or they leave Fairfax, they just don't have the alternative. And older people as well. So, increasing supply of housing, and another reason is to allow us to have a more vibrant community and a less gentrified community, as I think Jim was saying, the, his comments about what happens if we do nothing, what happens is that the community is gentrifying. That's just what's happening, because the prices are going higher and higher, and each time someone who has lived in a place for a long time moves out and it gets sold to someone who can afford to buy a million-dollar house, that's one more step. And I'd like to see us keep the character of the community together that way, so.
Okay. Well, in full disclosure, I used to live at Tennelevoe Road. It's one of the first places I lived when I lived in Fairfax. And so I know this property very well. And a couple of things I want to add, because I agree with Bruce. Most of us who believe in what's going on here, it's not because RENA told us to, or the state told us to, because we desperately need more housing in our community, and that's why we need to do what we're doing. But I want to speak to this whole idea of transportation, because, you know, there was a lot of scoffing at the notion that people would not own cars. I happen to know many, many people who don't own cars, and many other people who do own cars and usually leave them parked because they take public transit, or they walk or they bike where they go. And they live in these kind of locations where that is available to them. There have been plenty of studies out there that shows that people who live near transit facilities tend to drive less and use transit more. And also, lower-income people tend to own less cars and drive less. So we're not just making this stuff up, there are really people who actually want to live a car-free environment. And it's very difficult for me to hear that the main reason we don't want to build housing is because it's going to get in the way of our cars. We can't park our cars, or we can't move our cars. Well, most of our communities spend as much as 50% of our land area in the care and feeding and movement and storage of our vehicles. And that's land that could be green, that's land that could be lived on by people. This is the kind of communities we've been building for the last half-century, and we're trying to do something different here in Fairfax, and I applaud it.
Okay, Alexander, we're going to let you have a quick story.
Thanks very much. You know, Jim, you said that we're not here to talk about the RENA, we're here to talk about something else. But I think it just needs to be acknowledged that the question of these developments and others, RENA is given as one of the reasons that we need to have these things in our housing element, these densities and so on and so forth. And so, whether we talk about it tonight or not, it is part of the discussion. To me, there's a real question about whether we need to pre-zone rather than letting the owner of the property come in with a development proposal and then discuss the density. It seems to me that if we're talking about defining a minimum density of 20 per acre, and there's more than an acre here, I think it's a, just on that basis alone, it would be a minimum of 28, even if they don't get the 20% bonus. And what's the maximum? I think those are relevant questions, as well as the issue of affordability. Again, is there no affordable housing, affordable housing? Well, workforce housing, according to our own housing element, for a family of four can be earned up to $185,000. Low-income housing by ABAG category, single-person incomes up to over $63,500. So we need to talk about what low income means, that he's willing to, so many low-income housing, but what does that mean? What level of housing? And what guarantees are that that will remain, rather than after a year or two, those low-income housings become market-rate housing, et cetera, et cetera? There's a lot more that I could ask about that, but that's an example.
If I didn't get all your, we hope you have some time at the end. So, you're right, we're here because we're discussing how the town is attempting to meet the RENA. And as Councilman Bregman said on a couple occasions last time, we wouldn't be going through this exercise if it wasn't for the California Housing Element Law and the RENA that's given to us, that's distributed through our collective representatives forming as ABAG. And in terms of affordability, that comes down to the site and the project and the application. And I would remind you, we set a minimum because we have that sort of Damocles by the Housing Community Development Department. Anything beyond that is our discretion, including the bonuses. And that's one way that you get the affordability, is through incentivizing through the bonuses for affordability. But we can't on a single site stipulate the affordability. But please, if you have more that I, a comeback or something, but we'll come back. Right. No, that's right. But anything over 22 is discretionary. So let me move on, because this next one is going to get your attention. I'm going to try and be a little bit faster on the background, and we won't be having as much of a site capacity study explanation on that one. Because tonight we have the owner of School Street Plaza, Mr. Farshid Izazi, he goes by Fred for ease of us, that those don't, aren't from Iran, and his very learned architect with us, Heran Der Sarkazian. And dare I say that he's a planning commissioner from this, the town of Lacanada, right? Correct? Correct. Which actually, didn't you have your housing element sued?
No.
No. Ah, very good, right. So, the big surprise, you heard, remember that letter that ran around and everybody was up in arms about and whatnot? Well, we're here to hear in a moment what his vision for School Street Plaza is. So as, to start though, this is the site, School Street Plaza, is the site of the historic middle school in town, which actually, here's Broadway, all right? Here's Bank America, and the old bank street, which stops here, goes into the site, and is actually an easement that continues on across the new footbridge right here outside our building. There's the building where the old dispenser used to be, and then this is the old 1960s school that replaced a historic building which fronted the, fronted Broadway, was multi-story fronting Broadway. So that was torn down because it wasn't earthquake and fire-safe, and then in the 60s, this lovely piece of architecture came in. And Fred has actually been renting this out to a series of different tenants, and Frogs is right in here. This is the creek running through. There is a creek setback, it's 20 feet or two and a half times the depth from the top of bank to the bottom, whichever is greater. And again, this one, we're not married to be a planned district development. Next slide, please. We went through an interesting exercise when I first got here, which is about five and a half years ago. If you recall, the school board wanted to open up Deer Park School, and there were some folks that lived in that neighborhood that were a little concerned about traffic. And from a land use standpoint, it's actually a very hazardous site for whoever's occupying it. And it's a slide potential, fire potential, flood potential up there. And so we held a meeting to look at the old historic site of the school, and maybe this would be a good option, instead of the school district going to Deer Park Villa. It was a really interesting... It was a really interesting event. And don't you think, Joseph, that was a very interesting event? And Mr. Izazi was very kind to offer up the entire site for a new school. So we brought Matthew Thompson up from Santa Cruz. And in this room, over a couple of Saturday mornings, we did another site capacity study to see if a urban school could fit on this site. Urban schools require less play area and of course, this is a rich play area because you not only have the ball field, you have the pavilion that could be an ancillary use. And then you have a phenomenon that's happening now in education, which is called active learning area. And of course, the whole park area is an active learning area. So this modeled the potential, I think it was for about 280 students. It was rather novel in that we only accommodated the parking in terms of a roundabout for drop-off and pickup and with some curb parking there. But we looked at the unused capacity at Merwin and across the footbridge on School Street and also the unused capacity if you were to reorient and create a more efficient parking program at the pavilion. And so this was the concept that came out of that exercise. Unfortunately, the school board would not take yes for an answer and went the other way and ended up putting the extra students up at White Hill, which is unfortunately way upstream. So that's all we've done on this site to date. In the first iteration of the housing element, we did not include any residences. In the second iteration on the amended housing element last November, we, because we had to find that location for the extra units, we modeled nine on this, on this site. I might add that Matthew Thompson's work on this school, he actually designed this in his mind to be what they call nowadays flex space, where a building can actually go through an evolution. It could be a school, it could be an office building, or it could be residences. Flex space is very current in the urban design world because it can adapt to changing markets and different needs of a community. So quickly now, what we heard from you all on this site was very similar. Traffic generation, adequate parking, affordability, scale of the project and dislocation of the tenants, the one quite different one. We heard, I think the lady's here tonight actually, who was worried about her business being displaced, maybe I'm wrong. And, and of course Frogs has got to, Frogs has got to get taken care of too. But anyway, there's no, there's no application pending. The general plan only envisioned nine, minimum nine units at the site. We're not married in the housing element language to this having the base density stipulations. And where we're going at a staff level on this site and maybe coming back into the planning commission and council with a recommendation based on what we hear tonight also and our opportunity to digest this conversation is, if you back up to the, let's see, to the site plan, we think that in keeping with the historic character of town, not unlike the heel and the bookends from highway commercial, which are monolithic buildings with parking lagoons and ISORs, to the storefronts and the front, you know, pedestrian amenities, we think it may make some sense to zone the front portion of this site, central commercial, which again, would allow housing on the second floor by right. And then the back portion to keep it in planned development district. The site is actually conveniently 1.8, I think it's approximately 1.2 acres?
2.
2 acres, okay. 0.02. So, I'm sorry, 2 acres in total?
0.06.
0.06?
Yeah.
2.06, excuse me, thank you, my hearing is lousy. Okay. So approximately the front acre, central commercial and the back acre, and there is some setback because of the creek necessary, the back portion to planned development district. And that begs to question how many units on the back portion? And of course, there would be, if this idea took hold of the central commercial in the front, then there would be housing allowed by right. So again, there is no project to date, but we're here in a moment. So let's go back to that slide on the, on our recommendations, the next one, please. So again, we did the sequoia study on nine units, no more. If there's more units proposed, it'll have to go through an initial study, the checklist. I'm sorry?
You say for at least nine?
Yes, at least. Anything, when we, when you hear at least, that doesn't mean that anything over it is by right. It means we, the town has the discretion of anything over that. You don't have to allow over it. We create a minimum because HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state, wants you to zone to meet the RENA, wants you to zone so a specific number of units will be allowed by right. So affordability restrictions, I mentioned that. We can't do that on a single site. We have to do that in a concept on multiple sites. I just mentioned this concept of splitting it to central commercial and planned development district. I mentioned the 20-unit base density does not apply to this site in our deal with HCD. And then we want to discuss the scale of the project and parking. Next slide, please, which gets us to presentation. And if you could keep it to 10 minutes, we're doing pretty good. We're 15 minutes into the presentation of this site. I asked for 10 minutes on your, Harun, 10 minutes on your presentation, knowing that sometimes these things can go over. And so if you want to come put your flash drive up, I might take a question or, yeah. Anyone have a question while we're waiting for this to set up? Just a quick one? No? Okay.
Quickly, does central commercial allow for residential on the ground floor in the back?
No, it allows for second-floor residential by right. You have to get a conditional use permit for housing on the ground floor and in my mind's eye, on either the front or the back. I'm not, you're catching me on a wrinkle. I can't answer that fully, but I think it's anywhere on the first floor. Ted? Joseph?
My main concern with the School Street Plaza is the Bank Street right-of-way, which I believe is deeded to these folks to use. And it would take some of the ball field and I'm pretty concerned about that.
The site, Joseph, is actually before the ball field. It's this shaded area there. The School Street, School Street itself, the street itself runs tangent to the site. Maybe Heron, you can actually answer that more specifics. But the School Street, yep, it's not working? Ah, okay, take your time. That's all right, keep, keep going, keep going. So Joseph, Bank Street easement is further to the east, okay? The Bank Street easement is aligned with Bank Street. School Street Plaza is aligned tangent to School Street. It's a paper street. It actually goes far, unfar enough in to turn into the parking lot. But it's a paper street from there, right on across here to the end of the...
I think this is something that needs to be...
I'm sorry?
I think this is something that needs to be...
Okay, I'm glad, please, if, you know, point out what you can to me because, and in fact, on the, when Mr. Heron comes in with an application, should they decide to go forward, our, the plans are required to show all easements of record on the plans. And we do work very diligently to make sure easements are shown of record. And then we actually research the language in those records. And that's what we did with the Chevron application. By the way, the Chevron owner has come in with an application that will be on the docket on next Thursday at the planning commission on the 25th for restaurant use. So if you're interested in the disposition of that site, and it does not, the proposal that's in on our desk does not use the easement whatsoever in any way, shape or form at this point. Bank Street.
Anyway, as a start, I'm a practicing architect. I went to school in that green patch over there.
I'm sorry.
On the side of the bay, I've been practicing in State of California for almost 50 years. Graduated Cal at 65. I've been in Southern California recently, but I have also worked in San Francisco for years and years and so on and so forth. I was retained essentially to do a study and see what we could do for Mr. Izazi. And I want to say that I have the solution to all your problems. Everything can be resolved on this site. This is your treasure. This lot in the middle of downtown, two acres flat, is the solution to all of your problems you've discussed. Better than a lot of the other sites because this is a site where you can live and you can walk to the stores, you can walk to the bank, you can walk to your work, you can use less cars on this site than any of other sites you're considering. For example, the distance between Tenolima and the downtown is 2,000 feet, over two fifths of a mile. This one is 300 feet. So if I were living there, and it's a gorgeous place to live, and I would have chosen to live there as a resident, citizen, because it's all surrounded by residential area, which is, which is a better choice. But you would probably drive to downtown unless you were very ambitious. If you had to go two or three times between your work and your home for lunch and so forth, you probably would drive. Here, you don't have to do that. Anyway, I did a study of the site extensively, visited, photographed, looked at it, and let's see if I succeed. This thing is crooked and I don't know why.
I see. Um, the reason that I can eliminate this, I want to...
You just want to play your slideshow?
Yeah. I eliminated the rest of the study. Did you open it?
It's a PowerPoint. Yeah. It's a two-acre site that was... It was a two-acre site that probably at one time was a hill. And the top was cut, some, my guess is some 15 to 20 feet to create the parking lot that you, to they drive up to. And that was the economical point that they stopped. They stopped at that point and created an area and then built a building. The building was right along Broadway originally. I have a photograph of the building, by the way. It is on your sites. And they stopped at that point, so the street, the School Street is some four feet below the parking. The parking is at 135. The creek is 105, meaning that it is 30 feet below it. Berwick is 114 to 116. So there is approximately 20 feet drop between the 135 and Berwick, plus the building on the top. And in terms of neighborhood, we have one residence. It is surrounded by commercial, park, tennis courts and a lumberyard on one side, which is not one's, you know, best choice of a neighbor. Nonetheless, in terms of its proximity, I think it is the solution to a lot of essentially the issues that, here's the lumberyard, you all know, I know that, commercial, bank, recreation, recreation. The only house is this particular lot. At the beginning of the project, we, Mr. Izazi even considered purchasing and adding that particular residence to the development, but we were told that the house was an old house and chances of taking that down was not, not possible. So which basically, it has to remain as is forever. There is a driveway right here, existing, that I have used. And what we have, what I have really essentially as a concept thought is that we need to take your downtown, the effect of that wall and the downtown character that you have, and extend it to this corner. So my proposal involves creating a commercial strip along here. First of all, we're going to take the site and bring it down about three to three and a half feet. The reason for that is to connect it better to the Broadway Street and to take this height also and reduce the height of any building we build on it by three, three and a half feet, essentially. So the key is to continue the fabric of your downtown all the way to this corner. And then locate residential areas in this back area as, as you was mentioning. I would totally recommend against splitting the site. The reason for that would be that if you split the site, then the co-parking, co-use of the parking facility and so forth will all become very difficult. This is a prime lot for a PDD. This should be a PDD project. It should be on the plate in front of you. We should discuss it. We should vary it. We should alter it, but it should be designed as a PDD. And that is the best solution for the city, in my opinion. So with that preamble, if I go, well, that, is it, okay. So what we're proposing is 58 units. Out of 58 units, 40 of them are apartments for senior housing. There are 10 townhouses in here, which are essentially a walk-up type of a townhouse. A commercial building, which continues this, an element in here that connects the two buildings with an elevator and a stair makes this reachable to the handicap as well as this building. And on top of these are live-work spaces, eight of them. So here, we have a commercial building with live space above them and their parking is this area. These have their own parking. Each one of them has a tandem garage. And this has all parking underneath because here, I am limited to elevation 121 because of the floodplain. I cannot go any lower. I, that's the minimum. So I am 10 feet below this level. So I have tucked a parking underneath here that is only visible from the creek. Everything that you see from here is two-story. Everything will be two-story. Everything you see from the street here would be two-story. This would look two-story. The only place where you would sense a three-storiness would be here, which is opposed to a 28-foot blank wall of the hardware store in here. Next, this just shows the parking, the existing driveway is used to access the parking for the apartment. These have their own driveways and these people will park in here. This would be also guest parking for all the occupants of the complex. Next, in section, this is where the elevation is now and we will lower it to that, essentially. Here's the creek. And this is a given elevation to me that I don't have a choice. I have to stay in that 121. That's higher than the street, but I don't have a choice on that. So standing in here, you see a two-story building and you see a two-story building there and a two-story building there. The only place that you would sense something three-story would be on Berwick looking at the walk-up townhouses. And if you were a bird and looked up from the creek, you would see some of the parking showing below the two-story. I have set the building back 40 feet from the creek, not 20, but 40 feet could we go I'm 40 feet back in here. And all of this also, it's a very nice area. There is obviously the house. And then there is the other parcel that is used, I think, for parking and the creek goes and turns this way. I've continued the School Street and provided turnaround on the private parcel. So this could be also fire department access as well as some turnaround for them here. So there is total access for the fire department all around. And what else? And by reducing the height, I also rescued this building, which is somewhat choked by retaining walls around it presently. It's somewhere around seven feet below the parking lot level. Interestingly, I discovered... would go back and revise, and I think I will keep that wall as is. And it might be an obstacle, but I think it can be worked around, because it's a historic wall. It was there in 1922 school, when it was built. This is the existing survey with the elevations that I was mentioning. The street goes up and then it drops, and then drops slightly. The stone wall goes to this corner. This is an ugly retaining wall in here with a bank and roughly about a 14-foot height building on top of it. The building that I'm proposing is only two or three feet above the present volume of the school, no higher than that. If we went to the first slide, I'd like to go over about the parking count, because there's some data. Uh, no. Next, in this corner. So what we have is 10 townhouses. They require 20 parking, and we're providing 10 and 10, 20 for them. We have 40 apartments. It requires 80 parking, two per, although I don't believe it's, they will be there. I have provided basically 61 in their garage, plus eight work units, requires 24. I've counted three per, and we're providing 24. The commercial, existing plus what we're, existing plus what we are adding, it needs 19 spaces. We're providing 20. For the existing office, it requires eight. We're providing eight. So for a total requirement of 151, we are able to provide 114 plus 19, which is 133 parking. From my experience as an architect, I can tell you, when you get to a number like that, you never fill the parking lot or the parking structure. It's always, there's always vacancy there. So in terms of parking, we're totally, totally adequately parked, if not overparked. This is essentially a flat street up to here. It begins to drop from there to there, the last 100 feet, so we didn't go there. And this is an entry for the building up above, so you could also park here. So the parking is divided, that this group goes from this street.
Can you use the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Do you use the microphone?
I'm sorry. So the parking is divided. I have not provided any entry, because I don't want to enter from Broadway, which is a busier street, but this street is almost entirely servicing this development. So this is servicing that, an entry to the apartment building. These buildings are directly facing, obviously, Berwick, and then the driveway for these, uh, the, essentially, the senior housing.
Thank you very much for coming here and giving us the presentation. I appreciate it. So apparently, this letter dated May 5th to Jean Korn Pacific Union was to obtain financing for the project?
I would have to put your name on the document.
Okay, well, the reason, I'm not trying to embarrass you or anything. I just, when this letter surfaced, a lot of people said it was a scare tactic. And, and apparently, it is a valid letter in which you propose, and you're honest about it, you propose anywhere from 30 to 50 condos, as well as 8,000, 10,000 square feet of retail and office, and now, for the first time at least that I've heard, we're talking about 58 units. Isn't that what you said?
I said, I still count that much.
Okay.
The numbers are here.
No, I understand. Okay. My only comment to you is, I think that's way too much density, but thank you for coming here.
Could you help us understand, sir, why it would be beneficial not only to the owner but to the town to designate this site as a PDD, rather than you folks just coming forward with a project proposal and treat it at that time? Why do you need an advanced PDD designation? Who would that help?
I don't think that's a question.
Oh, well, he said something about this should be a PDD, so I wanted to know. I don't understand what that meant.
I've done part of the question, actually. I think it's wrong.
What I suggested is that the PDD process, where you will see a finished product on the plate, complete with elevations, with the whole picture, is the way to do it, not by zoning. If you zone the front, the back, you never know what the product, who's going to... And by the way, this is the only lot that you have in this. I mean, it is not even, usually cities are afraid that if I zone this PDD and that, things may happen that we are not in control. This is only one unique lot for City of Fairfax, and I propose that this should come as a project and should be looked at as a project and dealt with as project.
Not with, not with that. So, so, let me...
It's immaterial.
So his articulation about why he thinks it should be planned development district was, in contrast to my idea of floating the idea, the front CC and the front central commercial and the back planned development district. And there are some challenges with that. It's kind of awkward when you zone a single lot, two different designations. There's a little bit of the housing thing along Broadway down there, across from the big, you know, just past Pacheco that are that way. It's a real anomaly. It's not a good practice. So it would encumber the land to have to sort of split into two different parcels, which can be cumbersome. So he was speaking to that. But your question, going back to why shouldn't we be able to just do these one at a time, if I may, I think I'm hearing you hearken back to why master plan through the RENA process and the housing element. Why not just let projects come in one at a time? I'll tell you, one good response to my mind to that question, even though that's not why we're here tonight, is because it forces these conversations about the direction the town's going, rather than a particular planning commission and whatever that makeup may be at a particular time, or a particular council's makeup might be in favor of something or not. It gets everybody's fingerprints on the knife in a public participatory way. And again, that's the state requirement with housing element law. It's another question to debate whether the town should meet the RENA or not. What we're here to discuss is how we've come, the strategy the towns come up with to meet the RENA, not whether the town should meet the RENA.
There is one even better possibility for you, and that is to zone this parcel even higher than what we're proposing, and this, this as the frozen solution. That means you get the credit for a number of units, because that's what the state wants. I've been there, I've done that. So you could zone this hypothetically for 65 and get the credit between the 65 and the 58, or whatever number we end up, because that will never be used, because this is what the owner wants to do. By the way, this is a private project. It can have any kind of a limit that the city and the gentleman decide on. This does not have any, any federal money, does not have state money, there are no laws. It could be dedicated to the employees of this town, if you so choose. It can be dedicated to the seniors of this town, if so you so choose. Therefore, any limit can be negotiated, because it's a private property.
Your work is very impressive, and I can see why you're so esteemed to doing this. My question is, how affordable, if, if, who is in charge of making this an affordable housing situation, and how affordable will it be? And the other part of it is, if we do 58 units here, are we, do we have, do we get to do less anywhere else? Is that...
Again, with regards to affordability, the town is only able to create affordability standards for a multiple of sites. You can't just stick an affordability requirement on one parcel. It's spot zoning. With regards to what the owner and the architect would like to offer up as affordability, it remains to be seen. This is only, the plan is to only zone this from the town standpoint for nine units and not the stipulations under the other two sites for planned development district, for the 20-unit base density, the 16-unit minimum project, and the all-housing lot. That's not intended to apply to this site. So all that's been included, been included to date in the housing element is nine units. So anything above that is discretionary of the town, and when the, when, if in fact, Mr. Azazi and his architect, Iran, come in for an application to the planning commission, anything above that nine units is discretionary. The town can say, well, if they're not affordable, we don't want to pass this. It can't stipulate it must be affordable, but it can bargain on it in a develop...
Is it a power agreement?
Well, that all comes down to the negotiations at the entitlement stage, when they come in.
But who does that, is it, we have the town as the power, or the owner has the...
It's a negotiation process between the town and the owner. Okay? They either offer up some, and we say it's not good enough, or we say, how about this? And you negotiate through a development agreement. Does that make sense, Garrett? Is there anything you could add to that?
Maybe we're jumping ahead, but yes, you could have a development agreement that stipulates everything, but before we even get there, the council ultimately would have to have a policy discussion related...
Sorry.
So, yes, you can have a development agreement. Development agreement is originally a range between the developer and the town over a project like this. So you're going to do this, in exchange, we'll do this, and that's how you would deal with it. Ultimately, the council would have to approve that development agreement, but before we even get there, there'd be lots of policy discussion from the council. But I think this is great, because we wanted the developer to come out in a forum, not in an official application, to broach this concept. Now, I didn't know what this concept would be, so this is the first time I've heard it, same as anyone else, just right now. But that's the whole purpose, is to hear that and hear what the issues are, hear what the concerns are, and then start to have that discussion, because obviously, 58 units, obviously, you're going to have lots of questions. So hopefully, we can get more questions from it. So I'll pass it around. If you keep everything to about two minutes, so we can try to keep you close to 8 o'clock.
Hi, my name's Jenny Kelly, and I've been a Fairfax resident for about 12 years. I work at School Street as a massage therapist, and my main, my, one of my first questions is here, I, this is, it's very impressive looking, and I think you're probably an impressive architect. Thank you. We've been talking about providing workforce and low-cost housing for seniors, and I hear that there's, what, 10 low-cost housing for seniors, which is kind of low, in my opinion, a low amount, and I don't see any really workforce housing here. One of my feeling is that the people who are going to profit from this, and as any landlord would, wants to make a profit. I think the landlord is going to make the profit here, and I just don't see how the people of Fairfax and the people who are working and living there now are going to profit from this. I'm sorry. So, and the other, the other question is, you're talking about not an empty space or an empty piece of land that you want to do this on. People live and work. People live and work in this space. There's about 20-some massage therapists who have children.
Can you, can you state your comments, and we've got a lot of more people that want to talk.
Okay, all right. So I'm talking about people who are working in this space.
I think you understand, it's like, how does this help the people in Fairfax in terms of affordability and different groups? And I think it was your comments were part of adding to the list, what about displacing tenants? So I think we got it, but we've got just 17 more.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Jane Richardson-Mack, I've lived here for 30 years. I'll just quickly say one thing I'm concerned about. You mentioned that the Fairfax lumber wasn't particularly a beautiful thing to look at, I think. Oh, sorry. Blank wall at the Fairfax lumber, well, budding up another blank wall to a blank wall doesn't do much for the aesthetics of the town, so I would argue, could you make that a little more beautiful around there?
Yeah, you're going to be...
Pretty, please. Good. Glad to hear that. I was also very happy to hear...
They keep little townhouses for people who live in Fairfax.
CC.
But they don't want a large house, they want a small one.
I got you. I understand. I'm just wondering about what do you see from the road? Are you going to see something pretty? Ah, okay. I'm sorry. I just wanted to...
I'll come to the planning committee.
I will. A green bell. I was happy to hear that there, there is a provision that this owner can say Fairfax residents would get preference, if I understood correctly, if he wanted to. Ah, CC, okay.
Thank you for your presentation, and with all due respect, I failed to see how this is really in the character of Fairfax in the way it's presented. As someone has already mentioned, there are tenants there. I didn't hear anything in this presentation that talked about what's going to happen to those tenants and whether they're going to be able to stay. You know, if you think what we should do is take all of the various different zonings and put it all here, what I like about the housing element in Fairfax is its very small, modest increases throughout the town. I don't want to see it all put on one property. I think that's exactly what we don't want. That's exactly what Corte Madera did, and this is no Win Cup, it certainly isn't, but it's the same kind of concept of putting too much density on one property. I don't think this is appropriate. What I would like to recommend is that you sit down with, that the town helped to form a subcommittee of some of the tenants, of the owner and his architect, and some of the neighbors, and talk about what really would be appropriate for this site.
So could I, we've actually discussed having a workshop and natural planning commission, remember, before we submitted to...
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about an opportunity for people to discuss in a more casual setting what their needs are, what are the needs of the people in this town, and to really listen to what people would like to see there. I understand, it's your property, and you need to do what you need to do to make, to make your living off of the property, but at the same time, I think you would get a much better reaction, a response, if people were engaged and involved in the actual planning.
Okay, so I, I think what we're trying to do, okay, let me ask this. Are people willing to stay past 8?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. If we stay past 8, then are people willing to go with just three minutes? I didn't set the clock. You'd be surprised.
Three minutes, good.
Three minutes. Okay. So then, I'll let you finish, but what I forgot to mention to everyone is, the reason Michelle is taking notes is because those notes we're compiling and sending to council, and we'll talk about what possible next steps would be. But if we can, three minutes, we're going to probably go past 8, we're going to wrap it up, so apologies. Here you go.
Sorry, Garrett, if you guys could take the microphone while you respond, otherwise I'll call my company.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, it's a process that I've been involved with in my own community, of really working together with a developer from people of the community to talk about, I know you have this concept, I don't know if this is going to fly, and if anyone's going to support affordable housing in this community, it's someone like me, and I'm not in favor of this. So I think you're going to have a really hard time, so I would recommend that the town help facilitate a more casual conversation, not at the planning commission, but the opportunity for the people who are tenants there, the people who are neighbors there, you know, you can figure out what the makeup's going to be to have a real discussion about other alternatives besides this. Thank you.
Hello, Jessica Green. I live up on Ridgeway. I've lived here 25 years, and I will say, you know, I came from New York City, and I came here because it was not a dense place. And this is like, you know, bringing a little piece of New York City right in the middle of Fairfax, in terms of, you know, you know, the density. I don't know what, you know, whether it would be considered discrimination, you're talking about workforce housing, how you can really, you know, determine or force an owner to, who's going to live there. I don't know what guarantees there are of rents, and I really don't think there are any guarantees, and I think people can say they're going to do this and get it all passed and built, and then it doesn't wind up being what it was said to be. I think there are no guarantees. I think this is a huge project, and I think that we should... I think this is a huge project, and I think that we should stick with something more simple and like Fairfax. And that's what I have to say.
My name's Alex. I live at 67 Park Road, which is, I think, within the area that was described. What is it, 300 meters? Or there's a certain area of impacted residents. I'm an owner. I've been in Fairfax for over eight years at the same residence. A math question. The poster says that this would not require a 20-units-per-acre base density, but from my math, that would be, for this proposal, 29 units per acre, which exceeds the 20-unit-per-acre. It seems like you would need to have a revised design drawing that was below 20 units per acre. I'd also be interested in pursuing a maximum, if that's a possibility for the zoning. As it is on nights like this, I actually have trouble parking for my own home because of the events here. So, I anticipate that there will be a parking impact. And then, lastly, I've seen a study that shows the demand for the residential unit increase. So, I think it's a false argument that this residential need is there in Fairfax. I think that's all.
Joseph Odom. I live on Portus. And my earlier comment about School Street is very relevant here because I believe that home base on the ball field is about, right about there. And I think that even though they have that easement, perhaps the applicants don't realize how sacred we feel our ball field is. And I think that this is, really good to see this tonight, because this lets us know what happens when you propose PDDs. And that's where we are. Okay?
Hi, my name is Liesl. I live at 22 Pacheco. As I've said before, one of the most traffic-y little corners in town. And I really liked the Tenolima a lot, because I like that it's more in the keeping of Fairfax. I like the idea of little cottages, and I've seen some really wonderful, small cottage developments of affordable housing in rural, small towns in California and elsewhere. So, I'm way into that. I'm not so into this one. I would like it to be a lot smaller if there's housing involved. And I'm also really concerned, as I've lived here longer, about affordable commercial space for local businesses. I think that's something we should be really, I mean, maybe we are, but really thinking about. We have a lot of wonderful, small businesses, and that's what gives us the flavor of the town that we have. So, I would really like to see that insured. You know, I know that there are larger complexes in Fairfax, but we really, I was thinking, hoping for smaller scattered site projects to meet the requirements that would be more fitting to the town. I do like the idea of there being properties above shops, and I love that there'd be a little bit of that here, but I'd really like to see some way to protect the small businesses and the people that work there. And finally, this is probably pie in the sky, but, you know, some communities have community land trusts that are not just for buying places like Sky Ranch, which was wonderful, and I donated to, but also for buying community space for, you know, small businesses and art space and housing. And I wish there was some way we could be contributing money to that for something that we could keep in perpetuity in the community that was community-controlled. So, anyway, thank you. Just would like to see something a little bit more within keeping of Fairfax.
Shelley Hamilton. I appreciate you coming forward right now as a concept, and I just want to reiterate to everybody again, he's not an applicant. This isn't a project. This is somebody who's come forward with an idea and a concept. At our last forum, there was a handout given out by the General Plan Implementation Committee that was a very good description delineating the difference between general plan policies, which, again, I think is the first part of the conversation, going then into town code ordinances, which codify and put into much more descriptive and lockdown expressions of those policies. And then, you get into individual projects. The place that we're at right now is still way back at the general plan policy level. This is way down the road at an idea for a project. So, again, I appreciate this coming forward, but I think the conversation now needs to go back up altitude to the policy level. And this gets to this question around, why do you create zoning before you deal with projects? And what the Planning Commission does and the Town Council does is they take that zoning and they apply it to a project. And if you don't have that ahead of time, you don't have anything with which to reject projects that you don't want. So, the policies in the town general plan say the vision of what we want as a town. And then, the code is what the Planning Commission and the council use to assess a project. And if we don't have those delineations before projects come in, we can't, as a town, say this fits or this doesn't fit if we haven't articulated what fit means. So, I think this is a great working thing to reflect on. But again, the conversation then needs to be able to say, what are the policies that make this fit or not fit? And then, let's put those in place first before we evaluate this as a project. So, again, I would recommend everybody go back and look at that schematic so that you can understand where each of these conversations fit in. Then, with respect to minimum and maximum densities, maximum. Maximum is done because the site is only as big as the site is. And again, the town code has things like height limitations, setback limitations, something called a floor-area ratio, saying you can only cover the site with so much building, the rest has to be left open. Parking, you have to use a certain amount of the site for parking. And whatever is left over, that's your maximum. And when we looked at the Olima Street scope documents, that's what an architect does, is it looks at all of those maximum-limiting things and says, of what's left, what can I fit in here? And that's where you get the 22 units. That's pretty much the maximum. You can't fit much more on that with all those other, it can't be more than two stories. It has to be set back from the creek. You have to have this much open space. You have to have this much parking. That's pretty much where you get the maximum from. So, all these sites do have a maximum. They're set by our town code, and they're set by our land use regulations. So, that's what I wanted to say about the maximum. They do have maximums in place.
It's quite a plan, no doubt about it. I just wanted to clarify, you did mention, you were talking about taking down three feet of soil off of all two acres. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, back to my point earlier, that's the value of this property. And I think that seeing it gives us an idea of, you know, what kind of choices we want to make about it. As to the ball field, I'd like to think that anyone who's going to develop anything that's going to encroach upon the ball field is going to probably come up with a lot of opposition against the ball field. And as it was pointed out, there would have to be negotiation. I would find that if our town came out, for instance, against the Chevron, I'm pretty confident our town would come out to save any encroachment upon that ball field. But that might be part of some other negotiation, whether it's this project or something else. But I think this gives us a good feel, whether you like it or dislike it, for the scale of the kind of project that's possible. If you're willing to take three feet off of two acres of land, I think that gives you an idea of how valuable that land is.
For the reasons to not build, I think we left out, for the reasons to not build, I think we left out diminishing quality of life. Isn't that one of, but it was nowhere on this list of the reasons to do or not to do something. So, I'd like that to be included. And I also want to reiterate what you said and what I had said in our earlier meeting. I would really like to explore the cohousing, because I think that really fits in with Fairfax. And if there's a way to make it financially feasible for whomever owns the land, I think that would be a lovely way to do it. That would include housing for, all in one place, artists and seniors and kids and teenagers. And, you know, Fairfax is so about doing something like that, and I still, I'm still rooting for that to happen. The other thing is, I also would like to explore, and maybe on Olima, on Tenolima, if we did the cohousing there, we could keep the Mandarin as part of that big, the place where it's communal, and have little apartments. I also want to explore, there's a very strong movement now to tiny housing, not just Katrina housing, but really beautiful, little, tiny housing. And if you have that, you definitely have affordable housing. It's not even a question. So, if there's, you know, if there's a way for the owners to both make money and for us to satisfy who we are, I would love to see that happen.
I think watching this tonight makes me very, very grateful to the over 1,000 people in Fairfax who signed the petition for the referendum to get rid of the rezoning, and thank the council for paying attention to it. Because with the rezoning that was done, everything you're proposing would be okay. A minimum, if you had, let me just finish. If you had a minimum of 20 units per acre, and it was just said that if you're having, this turns out to 29 units per acre. So, you would be within your bounds. And it just shows why I think it's so important to look at each project individually, rather than, and I hope the town does not do a massive rezoning again, because then you end up with something that you have to fight. It's a lot better to look at each piece of property by itself.
A couple of points. One of them is something I mentioned with regard to Tenolima, I think applies to this too. I don't know, I didn't hear in the proposal or in the description what the idea is as, I think I heard Jim at a previous meeting say something about 50% affordable, whatever affordable means. As I said earlier, we don't know what affordable means. But if a project came forward and there was to be a negotiation with the town, again, I don't know how many of these units would be condos that would be sold, or would they be held by the owner and rented. But in either case, whatever was negotiated for affordability for low income or very low income, what's the guarantee that that affordability criterion remains? In other words, someone buys it, and then, when they resell, is there some kind of contract that will limit them as to how much the price can increase at that point on a rental? If they're Section 8 or whatever, what guarantees there that affordability remains? And just one other point with regard to the RENA restrictions or criteria, I started saying this earlier, in terms of second units, I think Jim mentioned at the earlier workshop that there are a number of approved second units that probably, or hopefully, could be part of the next RENA designation. So, even if, let's say, for these properties, the 22 and the nine, the owner wants to build much more than nine, but even though 31 units, there are more than 31 second units that might qualify. So, there are many ways of meeting these numbers. That's what I'm trying to say. And to present this, so there's only one way of doing it, and that's why we have to have this in the housing element, and do this and do that, and jump through all these hoops, I think is a mistake, because we need to look at what we really want and need, and then, what are the many diverse ways we can get there and figure out which way is best for Fairfax? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Taya Chavez, and I live in Forest Knolls, own a home there, raised my sons there. Son goes to Drake, and I have a business at School Street. And Fred and I have a really wonderful, I feel, relationship as a landlord. And the last thing I just heard here was our mutual needs, finding out what the needs are. And part of what Soul Studios is, is not just yoga and dance, but it's wellness. And it's about, you know, can we connect with sustainable Fairfax and have monthly forums where we sit in a circle and communicate based on what these needs are. And this next one is Saturday, and I want to invite anyone to be there from 2:00 to 4:00, where we'll be discussing what does it mean to be a citizen, and what does it mean to be, you know, have your voice? So, right now, I understand, I forget, what is your name? Shelley, I really was starting to get what you had to say. I'd love to speak with you more. That's what I like, is like, okay, what was that? I need to hear it again, because I'm learning a lot at this level. I work with clients on communication and being present, and we all have needs here. The strategy is going to be really interesting. Not sure. Right now, I'm hearing that this is a proposal, and Fred has always spoken honestly to me about all of this, even before we signed our lease. So, I don't like to get all up in arms about things, because then I end up getting sick. So, it's basically, my need is to stay healthy. I appreciate the time, and thank you.
Hi, Dave Smadbeck. I live here in Fairfax. I think this, I know we're supposed to be talking about these two projects today, but I think if there's anything that we have gotten out of this, is that, as Shelley had mentioned, we do need to have a policy discussion about what it is that we do want here. And I, for one, am starting to think, you know, there's a whole reason why Mark Levine is trying to get that, I think they passed it, to change the unit density from 30 to 20 units. And I think 20 units is, you know, for Fairfax, huge, and a huge impact. And we can do it, the plan that they had in place, that they were trying to do, actually spread out that development. And I do think that there was something good to be seen from that. But I think we do need to have this conversation from a policy standpoint. I have to admit, and no offense to Mr. Azazi, but I was shocked when I saw this plan. For San Francisco, yes, great. Fairfax, you know, what we need is controlled development. We need to, and if people are wondering, how do you assure affordable housing? Well, there are national and local limits. There are organizations that do it very effectively. Lanham Village is one of those over in Nevada. It's run by the Ecumenical Housing Authority, and they do an excellent job with that. You can create CCNRs that say only, we will allow this project to go through only if certain criteria is met. I mean, there's a lot of ways to make it, to do it, so that you can keep in perpetuity how a property is developed and how it is utilized. Anyway, and I do also understand Diane's concerns. I have the very same concern. I do understand that they would rather, there's a group that would rather see projects be presented on its own merit, one at a time. And one question I would have for the staff is, if we do designate these locations for density, can we, does it open us up to liability, to lawsuit in the future for a developer? Because I know that's a fear also. Thank you.
Okay. His last question was also a question that I had, so I just want to reiterate that. But I do also just want to say really quickly that this is like the best conversation I've had in a while about this issue. I really like the way people are presenting their points and really thinking through the different topics. And so, I just want to say thank you to everybody for doing that. There have been a couple of times after planning meetings lately where, you know, I've talked to people who don't totally agree with me, and I don't totally agree with them. And we've had actually nice conversations, and I do feel like we're going to move towards something that will get us what we want. For me, housing affordability has been a big issue. I've lived in San Francisco. I've lived here, and I've seen what happens when people get pushed out, and it's people that I know, so I'm very concerned about that. But the other thing that's made me really sad is some of the tone of the conversation that's taken place about this. And I really feel grateful to everybody for being willing to really talk this way about it. So, thank you.
Okay. Has everyone spoken who hasn't spoken yet? If you haven't spoken yet, would you like to speak now? Anyone? Say, everyone, okay. Oh, you are.
Well, a comment that I had is that this building area that we're talking about now is a valuable community. is a valuable community resource already. There's new projects beginning in these spaces, and new tenants as of the past year or two that are contributing to the community in valuable ways, creating ways for the community to gather, to share resources and gifts. I go to a singing circle in a new space that opened there. And I'm a massage therapist at Frog's, which is 20-something years as part of a place that people come from everywhere and wish to continue. Frog's is known all over, and people trek to get here and to use it. So I think that there should be something said or put in place to protect what already exists, and the value that it's offering as a community resource. And I just didn't hear that much about that, so I wanted to make sure that I said it.
I just want to reiterate, and make sure everyone understands, that it's not in the housing element, that this site should be at the base density of 20 units per acre. It is not part of the deal that was cut with the Housing and Community Development. The only thing that was included in the housing element with regards to this site was at least nine units on this site, that's all. The only base density was applied to Tenalima and the church site. Those are the only two sites, and you see on that table on the wall, the only two sites where the base density is being, being applied, is at Tenalima and the church. There is no intention at this point in time to apply the base density to School Street Plaza. I just want to make sure everybody's got that. Thank you.
Okay. So what we said we would do is then we would have more general comments, but perhaps, all right, we're starting, perhaps I should let Mr. Zazis maybe take, maybe, no more than maybe five minutes just to respond, but I don't think it's, you have to answer all the questions, but if you want to just say some final comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fred Zazi. I had been in this town 24 years plus, and I haven't bought, I'm not a developer. I am the one, I love this town, and I have put my all life saving in this town. And, but one of the things I look into, what the future is. Do we want to live the way we do today? What's going to happen for next two generations? We have to think about it, whatever we do, we have to consider that one. If we are selfish enough, we are looking only for ourselves, wonderful. But what happened to our kids? Do we want our kids to move out of here, out of sight, out of house, out of town? Yes, that's the way we can leave everything as it is. But if you want to develop it and look something which we can live ourselves as well as our future children, we have to have open mind, we have to think what is the best we can do. One of the biggest things for affordability is supply and demand. There's nothing anybody can do it except supply and demand. If you have more housing, yes, the price is going to go down. If you don't want to develop anything, believe me, if you want it or don't you want it, you are going to live in a shack and pay $2,000, $3,000. Thank you.
So, what I'd like to suggest is, we did say we would have a general question and answer. So if you have something that hasn't been raised, or is a comment perhaps different than what you've already made related to projects, by all means, maybe take a minute or two, so we don't keep people here all night. So if you have a general thing, it looks like Mr. Sargent does, so.
Thank you, John Sargent, I live in Fairfax. What is missing from a lot of these presentations is consideration of traffic. And some people feel, like A-Bag does, that high-density housing, people won't drive cars. And that's absolutely a false premise. That may work in San Francisco, but it doesn't work here. We can't even staff our mass transit that we have now. I don't know if you people caught the IJ article, where a third of the bus drivers don't even report for work anymore? And so it's not like a bus is going to go by every 10 or 15 minutes, maybe in commute time, but not in the other times. So traffic is a major concern. I don't know how many of you try to get in and out of Fairfax during either commute hours or school hours. It's really a mess. And so traffic seems to be taking a backseat to all this planning, and I really object to that. People are going to drive their cars. Some people will bike, et cetera, et cetera. Some will drive their car. As far as future mass transit, I talked to the Transportation Authority in Marin about how they would provide additional transportation. They told me that they will only consider providing additional transportation once a project is built, not in the planning stage. And they said that's, quote, "study" would take a year. As far as the housing prices, if we have more housing, the price will go down. I think that's a false premise also. There's so much demand for housing in Marin, that you could build 200 units or 300 units, and I don't think the prices would go down. Another thing that, let me premise this by saying, I'm a regular attendee at water board meetings, and I want to assure you of a couple of things. They are telling the Marin Planning Commission, and maybe you've had contact with them, that they can provide water no matter how, how much housing, you know, we put here. And that's a false premise. They are taking a very non-aggressive approach to water management. And they have no concrete plans for additional resources to provide additional water. And I might add to that, they don't even know the true capacity of their reservoirs. They only know the capacity of the reservoirs when they were first built. One of the attendees at the water board meetings say, you know, you watch this water going into the reservoirs, it looks like chocolate milk. And it looks like chocolate milk, because it's full of soil. We ran out of water in 1977, and it was, if it wasn't for the pipeline over the bridge, we would have not have any water. Further, in 1991, there was a severe drought, and they limited it to 50 gallons a person per household. There is not enough water to keep building all these housing units. Thank you.
I just wanted to also mention that the rest of the state's actually in a worse state than we are, and I feel kind of bad about the fact that people are moving to places that have even a worse drought situation than us, so I don't really know what to do about that. But it's a, it's a, the whole West is in a drought right now, not just Marin, and has a growing population. So somehow, we all need to figure out a way to balance that, and I am concerned about that. The question that I had, though, is, you know, we have, I'm very interested in some sort of housing affordability, however we do it. There's a crisis nationwide, so that's my thing. But in terms of the A-Bag requirements, the question that I've had for a while is, is there a point at which they consider a town, say such as ours, that's surrounded by open space, built out? How do they assess that? When is it that they would say, stop requiring us to build more housing? Or is there any answer to that? Just kind of curious.
Okay, any last?
I just wanted to mention that my overriding concern about planning issues for the town of Fairfax and for the planet, happens to be the climate change issues that we're facing, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I think that's first and foremost on my mind. I work every day on a piece of property with 10 acres and over 330 people who live there quite happily, with one-third of them, less than one-third of them owning cars. So I think there's all kinds of ways communities can come together, and seniors and the climate change are two of my overriding concerns and issues.
Hi, I'm just a little late, sorry about that. But looking at the Tenalima site, I'm wondering and concerned about the 22 units, and then the words like "discuss parking restrictions," I think that's unrealistic. And I agree with the fact that when we say people don't need cars, people come to Marin, they can afford to live here, they're going to have cars. And living at Tenalima, I know that that street is busy. There's a lot of deer that access up and down there. My kids play up and down that street. People speed down that street as it is. With the congestion that 22 units would create on that, with the parking, people parking on the street, will make it hazardous for children, hazardous for the wildlife, and pretty much change our neighborhood in such a way that I think would really diminish residents' quality of life. So I want to consider that. Also, I think when we talk about the School Street units, you know, it seems like we have it a little bit upside down. Put 22 units at School Street, put eight at 22 Alima. You know, we're not against having workforce housing, or senior housing, or anything like that, but let's do it right. And when we talk about those kinds of units, let's not talk about units from Lowe's, you know, cottage-style units that come in and dot the property in such a way that really diminish our neighborhood. So I want to really consider very carefully the planning process. When the Planning Commission talks about not approving a particular type of project, I think when we talk about densities, like 22, you know, 20 per acre, we have to be very thoughtful. That's a lynch point at 22, at Alima and Sir Francis Drake. It's already backed up there anytime after 7:30 till, I don't know when, I go to work earlier, but if I'm late and I have to leave after 7:30, it's backed up to Manor. So be thoughtful, be careful, and don't push us out, you know? Don't, don't, let's do it right.
Okay, so, okay. Last, wait, wait, this is your second time, though, right? No? Oh, you were waiting. Okay.
Thank you. I know we're staying late. One thing I'd like to see, I realize we don't have any projects, and it's up to developers, owners, but I know a number of the people who live, I remember when they first built it, this development in San Rafael called Ecology House, which is a very unique kind of development for low-income disabled or elderly folks. By design, they didn't do it perfectly, but they really tried hard to make it be as relatively non-toxic as possible, so that a lot of people who, because of sensitivity to chemicals, can't live anywhere else. There's no place for them to live. And so it filled up right away, and there's a lot more demand for that kind of thing. And Fairfax is the kind of community I would like to see be hospitable to that kind of thing. There may be a way, even though we can't make a project happen, we might put out intentions as to what we'd like to see, and maybe that would be helpful. And I want to just reiterate what a couple other people have said. I, myself, a number of people have asked me to keep my eyes open for housing as it opens up in Fairfax, especially rental housing. People from all around the Bay Area and even Southern California, they want to get away from smart meters. There are all kinds of reasons that people want to live in Fairfax, people from Marin and from outside of Marin. And building these small number of units, to think that that's somehow going to create so much supply that the demand won't be there, the demand is very elastic, and it will fill that supply very quickly, and we can't expect it to have any lasting impact on the prices for sale or for rental. I think that's an illusion. And the last thing is about traffic congestion, as was mentioned. Nobody who lives anywhere wants more congestion in their neighborhood, anywhere in Marin or anywhere else. But in Fairfax, we have the kind of constraints of being in this very narrow valley with, in some cases, two streets or one through-street for all traffic to go in and out of town in any direction, either direction. And that really limits, that creates this potential gridlock around traffic. And, you know, if the valley were much wider, and there were a number of possible streets and other ways for traffic to flow, that potential impact wouldn't be as great. But we've got what we've got, and that's why we have to be very careful. Because once the housing is built and things get ruined, we can't go back. That's why some of us are saying, let's slow it down and really think about this. And there may have been a traffic study, but a lot of us want to really think through it for ourselves, you know, because I've seen traffic studies in places where, then things were built, and whatever the traffic study said, it's a mess. Thanks for the time.
So can you try to wrap this up, but so just one last comment?
Just real quickly, I think Marin County is the home of the Bioneers Conference, which is coming up in October. And Fairfax especially is a group of really intelligent visionary people. And yes, we have resource constraints, and climate change issues, and water issues, but you know what? I don't, I believe that we have the ability to make it a both-and, to deal with our resource issues and provide equitable housing. It doesn't need to be an either-or. I think we can do them together.
Great. So before I turn this back to the council, I just wanted to share staff's thought process for the next step. Really, the next step was, we were going to summarize all these comments. It seems like we need to get people some answers to some of the questions, which we'll try to do. Our game plan was to try to bring this to the council, kind of the summary of what happened tonight, the first meeting in October. I guess it really depends how well we can actually answer some of the questions. But with what went on tonight, it also is going to give staff some time to digest what we think some of the next steps should be. One being, we need to answer more questions. Two, what are the policies in terms of how it needs to go back to the council for overall discussion? So that'll be our game plan, to go back in October with some recommendations and the summary of this to the council. But that being said, before I turn it back to the council, I'd just like to thank the two applicants for coming in, spending the time, sharing what's their proposal. I think it's very helpful in this forum that you broach this, just so we can hear what all those comments and opinions are. So with that, turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you all for coming. It's the second in a series that we'll be having over the next couple of months. Again, as Garrett said, as soon as staff can do it, we'll get some answers and responses to all of the very good and thoughtful comments that all of you have made here, and from the folks that have joined us earlier in the meeting. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay. Thank you very much. See you on October 1st.